Good afternoon. My name is Richard Swett. I am the co-chair of the Special Committee on Voter Confidence. I will be conducting this meeting this afternoon. We have a few announcements to make, but before we do that, I thought we would just run down the dais and have each of the committee members introduce themselves and let you know where they're from. And we'll start with Ken on my far left.
Okay. Would you like to, do we normally start with pledge of allegiance?
No, we haven't in the past.
Okay. Okay. My name's Ken Iring from Windham, New Hampshire.
Jim Spillane from Portsmouth.
Brad Cook from Manchester.
Amanda Merrill from Durham.
Andrew Georgievitz from Concord.
Olivia Zink Franklin, New Hampshire.
Thank you. We are asked to announce that there will be no eating or drinking in the room. If you have a bottle of water, that's perfectly fine, but nothing else. The restrooms are down the hall and to the right. And for anybody who is not here yet that you might be texting with, the parking is in the lower City Hall lot or in the South Mill Pond over by the playground. And this meeting has a hard stop of 4:30. And for that reason, what we are going to be doing is during the public comment period is anyone who has spoken at previous hearings, we will move them to the end of the list. We will obviously see how much time we have for the public comment and divided by the number of people here so that everybody has an equal and fair opportunity to speak. And you're all invited to come to future meetings and make your presentation there as well. Those will not be bound by the parameters of having to conclude at a time certain. So we'll get your testimony and presentations in one way or another. Yes?
I was just informed there's no audio. We're people watching on this.
I am not the technician, so I'm sorry. I can only bring it to the technician's attention. Thank you for letting us know. I think we'll proceed while they're working on the technical issues. So we'll call the meeting to order at this time. And the first order of business that we have on the agenda is the approval of the May 24 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Yes. Discussion?
Yes, I submitted some proposed changes to that. And I was told by Anna that everybody had a copy of that in their packet. My proposed changes are in bold.
You said that they were put in bold. The copy that we have, do you see in the copy that we have in our packet?
Yeah, she submitted two copies. The second one has some addendums on the end of each paragraph.
Oh, okay. I have that, yes.
It's just, I took fairly thorough notes last time. And because the purpose of this committee is to take feedback and concerns, comments, and both positive and negative, as well as suggestions, I inserted some of them for each person as well.
I, do you have a comment?
I do. I appreciate a thorough minutes reader. And, but I would rather not be rushed into going over all of these right now. And I think we could put off, okay, minutes till the next ten, so that we have a chance to look at the question.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So the suggestion has been made that we table the approval of the minutes at this time?
Just before we do that, somebody smarter than I who's familiar with the requirements of how fast we're supposed to approve minutes, like Mr. Lang, might tell us if we can delay? Because I know they have to be posted in a certain amount of time, but do they have to be approved in a certain amount of time?
They have to be posted in draft form five days after the meeting, which they were. And then if you were to take action to postpone them to a date certain, you could do that, I believe. But also, with respect to the detail of the minutes, one of the reasons we put the video is so that people can hear and access and watch the exact intent of everyone. So we didn't get caught up in the specifics of the minutes. Anyone who says we should keep it as a simple representative form of process, we didn't want people to interpret what people had said. I think that's why we did include the video.
In light of what I have just heard, yes, Jim?
Yeah, just to elaborate on what David Lang just said, excuse me, I'm pretty familiar with the right to know law, since I'd worked on it legislatively in Masons and Robert's Roosevelt Order. And the fact is that minutes only need to contain who, what, where, when. Who did what? Who attended? Where the meeting was? What was done? If any action was taken? And when? And the more detailed minutes can become very confusing, especially with the video being available. One can interpret a statement by somebody in a variety of different ways. So I'm comfortable seeing the minutes done by the staff as the staff is doing. But if somebody wants to add notes and elaborate, those could perhaps be submitted as notes to the committee of that meeting. I think a member of the public could do that, a member of the committee could do that, as long as it's separate from the approval of the minutes process. I think that would be fine. So I'd be comfortable voting in favor of the minutes as submitted by staff today.
And Ken, would you accept your notes as addendum to the minutes and then be attached to the minutes that are approved in this meeting?
That would be fine, as long as at the end of the minutes, it says that the comments in bold on the attached, on the attached minutes were made by me, just so that people know. Because we are supposed to listen to, and there's nothing in there that's personal interpretation. Some of the, some of the people who testified last time, the state had actually put in, he said or she said, and then there'd be a sentence. And I just followed that same process. I said, he said this, she said that. I understand that we have a video of these meetings, but they're very, very long. And to ask people to go back and review them, especially for us, I think it would be helpful to have these minutes at the end of this process, after however many meetings, we have to go back and review the minutes. I think, you know, these are, these are not a tremendous amount of detail, but it'll help jog memory. It also provides an insight as to who feels comfortable with the current voting process and who doesn't, and what some of their reasons are. There's not a lot that I added. For one particular person, one of the first speakers, there were seven points that I put down. I thought that, you know, he was a town official. I wanted to capture all of that. And then there's just one or two sentences for maybe half a dozen other people that I put in, you know, just to share their thoughts and concerns and suggestions. I just wanted to make it easier for us as well as the public to see that.
Absolutely. And I think that's in the spirit of the special committee's objective. So would, would we like to revise the motion to approve the minutes as amended by, by Ken with that notation inserted at the end of the, at the end of the minutes that are being approved and then amended by, by the version that Ken provided with his notes included?
How would, how would the motion be to approve the minutes as drafted by staff with a notation at the end that notes have been submitted by Ken?
And attached.
And attached. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
More discussion? I'm sorry. Yes. Olivia?
On page three, it said co-chair Swett, but I remember that being co-chair Cook saying that comment. I don't know if others remember differently. Page three.
Paragraph?
The fifth one from the top.
You're ahead of me. So is that, is that in?
Is that in Ken's version or in the?
The staff draft version, page three.
Staff draft, okay.
Page three of four. That will help you.
At the top?
No, fifth one from the bottom.
Okay.
Committee member.
I should say co-chair. I think it was Cook that reassured.
I think it was Swett, but that's okay.
Yeah, actually, I recall it was me that said that.
Okay, that's fine. Your memory's different than mine.
We're fine.
We may both have said it.
Amanda, yes, Mandy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure clear on the process going forward. If anybody on the committee has comments or corrections that, while keeping in mind the, the goal of keeping things reasonably short, we sent, should we send, where should we send them? And how would they be treated in terms of discussion? Will it be?
The process is that the, the draft minutes from the meeting go first to the co-chairs. We review and submit back any comments that we have. Then they are distributed to the committee. And that is where Ken had the opportunity to see that he had additional things in his notes that he wanted added. So that was, that was when he injected. I did not see the notes that he added before the meeting.
Right. And I think one thing, you know, to encourage as much as possible is getting, obviously, getting the draft minutes to the committee as quickly as possible, and then having members send in their comments or corrections as soon as possible. So that, I mean, one problem I had was just seeing these corrections at the last minute. If I could have a chance to see them before, that would have been helpful.
Sure. And I understand, and that is the challenge that we're facing when we have a compressed schedule like we have. Any, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? The motion passes. I would like to introduce Kelly Barnaby, the city clerk, who would like to speak at this time.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Kelly Barnaby, and I am the city clerk of Portsmouth. I have been working with elections for the last 34 years here in the city in various capacities. I started in the office as a clerk typist. I worked my way up as deputy city clerk, and then I became city clerk in 1994. Voter confidence is significant aspect that I, as city clerk, takes very seriously. I want to ensure the voters have confidence in the process and procedures followed here in the city of Portsmouth and the state of New Hampshire. Training is a major component and a main focus for me as clerk. I conduct training sessions for all election officials to provide the knowledge and tools necessary to perform elections in a manner that is aligned with the laws of the state of New Hampshire. Training and education is something that I, as city clerk, maintains in order to function and provide a positive voting experience for voters. The secretary of state has enhanced his training opportunities for city clerks as well as town clerks, I want to include town clerks, and all election officials, which has had a positive effect for all of us in providing safe and accessible elections for all voters in the state of New Hampshire. Elections are very important, and as city clerk, I perform those functions with the utmost professionalism and knowledge. I took an oath when I became city clerk to solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and to the state of New Hampshire, and I will support the Constitution thereof. Further, I impartially, I solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as city clerk for the city of Portsmouth, New Hampshire. That oath is not taken lightly, but with respect, professionalism, and thoughtfulness for the job I do as city clerk for Portsmouth and the residents of this wonderful community. Thank you for the opportunity, and have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you very much. Jim, yes, Jim?
Yes, since I'm a Portsmouth resident, I've seen, I've seen Kelly operate all of those 34 years of elections, many dozens of elections that I participated in, with the volunteers who work at our polls, about 70 throughout the five wards. I have to say that with a bit of bias that Kelly is, and I think I can say this, even though I agreed to be very open-minded during these hearings, Kelly is the best city clerk, town clerk that we have in the state, and is illustrative of the quality of all of the city and town clerks we've come to know. So thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Jim. We now will take just a moment to announce that we have received written testimony between the previous meeting and this meeting. And that testimony will be read into the record, not in its entirety, but just in the fact that it has been received and who it was received from. And I will try to assemble the various emails that we've received. I have one from a Susan Richmond. I have one from Susan Richmond, an email from Stefan Katz, another email from Carol The next email is from Kit Lord, Norman Hool, Gail Carey, Kathleen M. Bean, Beth Mosley. And that concludes. There is also an article that was submitted that was written by Amanda Goke for New Hampshire Public Radio and the New Hampshire Bulletin. And those will all be on the website, so if you are interested in reading their content, you will go to the secretary of state website, and you are welcome to read them there. We have our last special committee member, Doug Teshner. I don't want to rush you, Doug, but we had a slot for you to make comment on the article that you shared with the committee. You still want to do that?
Yes, I would. Let me just say that my intent was just to send a link of an article that I thought was an interesting article to the committee. And because of the public disclosure, I was told it's better not to set a link, it's better to do it at the committee meeting. So therefore, I printed out a copy of the article, which is about election workers and possible intimidation, which I thought would be of interest. And since I was already passing out things, I included a copy of the ground rules that I had given the committee earlier that I had not disclosed fully to the public. And while I was adding, I added an article I had written recently in the New Hampshire Business Review about political polarization. So that's what's there. Thank you. These are copies for the public.
We will begin the testimony portion of the meeting first with testimony given by city officials. So far, we have five who have signed up to provide their testimony in addition to the Portsmouth city clerk who we just heard from. And they will be done in the order of their having signed up. The first person that we would like to hear from is Cassie Givara from the city of Rochester.
I apologize, I signed it on my own sheet. I did not intend to make that mistake.
Okay. Next is M. Brenner.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
Next is R. Baines from, is that Hanover or no? Is R. Baines here for providing testimony? Next is Lauren Pitt.
Lori.
Please state your name and where you're from and your official title.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Lori Pitt, and I'm the town clerk and tax collector in the town of Durham. And I started working there in 1992 as the deputy, and then I took over for my predecessor in 2004. So I have been part of elections for a really long time and watched a lot of changes over time. And certainly being in, I'm not a city, but working in the college town of the university, there's a lot of challenges, as most of you might be aware. But I too took an oath to do to the best of my ability and follow all the regulations and laws of the state of New Hampshire. I believe that our elections are extremely safe from my perspective and my work in the clerk's office and with our election officials. The state of New Hampshire has been very, very helpful, certainly also in the last few years with COVID and all of the extra issues that we had to deal with on a regular basis. Speaking of 2020, we had a number of people that questioned some of, like, for instance, absentee ballots that people were able to get. Normally, we might have maybe 800 on a general election, but we had over 4,000. And because we were able to process early, we had a number of people that questioned the process and was it correct and were we doing it right? And they were certainly welcome to come and witness. And to our pleasure, they were very happy with the results and watching how professional and how well-run the process really was. And again, over the years, we try to do lots of training with, there are times with an election, we might have 3,000 voters on the same day, they're registering on the same day, excuse me. And so we have to recruit many volunteers to help throughout the day. So we have to do a lot of training and a lot of organizing, excuse me. And in my experience, I'm just very happy with the process, and I hope that it just continues and that most of you will realize that the process is working and that we have not experienced issues of fraud. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Yes.
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. Did you say sometimes you have 3,000 people register to vote on the same day?
Same-day registration, yes.
Wow, that's a lot.
A lot.
Follow-up?
Yes, please.
How many people are registered to vote?
Well, right now, because this last year happened to be the 10-year purge year, we had been up to about 16,000. If I'm correct, are we about nine? We're at 9,000 now, yes.
Other question? Yes, Mandy?
Just a comment. I have been one of Lori's volunteers, and I have to say she's amazing. So while Representatives Spleen may claim the best city clerk in the state, I nominate Lori Pitt for best town clerk in the state.
Take the title with you.
One could be town, one could be city.
This is not a competitive environment, of course. A follow-up for me, Lori. The 3,000, is that average? That has been over time, or was that specifically in 2020?
We've actually, I can't say the exact amount because my supervisor with the checklist is back there. I think one year we had 4,000, didn't we?
No.
Not quite. But I mean, typically, 2,000 to 3,000 on a presidential primary or the general election has not been, yeah, we've done it a few times.
Okay, sorry. Brad?
I spent a lovely weekend in Durham, so it was 50th reunion, 52nd reunion. Can you tell us something about how you and the university cooperate to try to manage the onslaught that you got in presidential years?
Yes, again, myself and our supervisor with the checklist and the moderator work directly with the university. And this past year, for instance, in 2020, we had a number of different times where we actually worked with them to set times up to go up on campus, to register folks. We've always done that over the years, but in 2020, because of the pandemic, we made times where we could go up for a number of hours, and we set it up so that they could actually get their absentee ballot, they could vote, just like as if they had come into our office if they were unable or were not comfortable with going to the polls the day of election due to COVID. We also encourage them to certainly come down to our office when we're open as well. And our supervisors have the certain times during the year that they are available outside of our regular business hours as well. But the university, over the years, has been very helpful with working with us.
Because I know in the committee that we had done how to vote in a pandemic, one of our sessions was the special needs of college towns and officials to have a safe process.
Yes. I think it ran very, very smoothly. I think that we had regular meetings during that year, and I think it really, really helped with organizing and making sure we had trained helpers that we swore in and taught a number of them that have actually helped us in the past with registering new voters as well.
In an off-year or municipal election, what are your typical same-day registrations?
Well, we are FB two towns, so we have the school election at the same time. So probably, as far as registering new people, probably a couple hundred sometimes.
The rest of that day?
Mm-hmm.
For a town election, it's more like 50 new people. I'm going to go with 50, because last year we had a little more.
We had a little more than last year. But as far as actual voters that day, usually around 2,000 voters that actually show up at the town elections.
But in an off-year, like 2018 or 2022?
I didn't look at the numbers recently, but around 4,000, 4,500 voters.
4,000 vote, how many same-day registrations?
Same-day registrations, 1,000, yeah. We still have a large amount for the size of our town, but not like the general.
Give any feel for what percentage of them are students in a presidential year versus an off-year election or by any election?
Definitely, the ratio is going to be higher with the students. Your typical amount for a general election possibly would maybe be a couple hundred, probably, of actual residents that have moved into town that have not had a chance to register yet.
Okay, thank you.
Of the same-day registrants, how many do not have proper ID in order to?
We don't specifically track that number. Certainly, again, we work with the university to try to get the information out there so that people do come with their proofs.
You do have a process for those that don't have ID?
Yes.
Could you describe that, please?
We have affidavits that whether it's citizenship, domicile, also if they do not have their photo ID, if one of the election officials does not, can't vouch for them, does not recognize them, then they fill out a form and have their picture taken. That goes directly into the secretary of state's office after the election, and they have to bring that to the ballot clerk to get their ballot because they don't have their photo ID.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, thank you very much for your testimony. Next on our, yes?
I believe that I could have possibly been R. Baines. It's supposed to be Regina Barnes from Hampton, and I meant to sign up as the regular public.
Oh, Barnes, is it Barnes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it okay if I?
You, yes, you may, you can come up now, or, well, let's see, I'm sorry. You said that you are not a public official.
I'm just regular.
Okay, then we'll move you to the top of the public, open public hearing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for clarifying my bad interpretation. The last person that we have on the city and town officials list is Ann Shump.
I also signed up by accident, but I decided I'm going to say something. My name is Ann Shump. I am the chairman of the supervisors of the checklist in Durham. So we work very hard in Durham, as Lori has told you, with some of the large numbers of registrations that we get. We are the ones, we are the ones that organize all the volunteers to help with the presidential election, where we might get up to 3,000 or a few more, a few over 3,000 new voters on Election Day. It is quite a task, but we, luckily in Durham, we have a lot of people who are willing to volunteer. So on a presidential election day, we'll have at least 75 people helping over the course of the day just to register new voters. There was a question you had asked, Lori, I was going to try to answer a little better, but in a year like this year, I would expect at our general election to have anywhere between 500 and 1,500 people register to vote at the election on Election Day, which means we have to be ready for 2,000, just in case. And I might say that in 2020, we actually had a lower number of people at the presidential election register to vote, partly because UNH was practically closed. All the students were learning from home. So they registered there where their parents lived rather than registering in Durham. The process in Durham was probably more, for that year, was probably more organized than it ever has been or ever will be again because the university required that anybody who went into any building on campus had to be tested for COVID within five days. So we had to be very organized, know exactly who was going to help that day. And the people that, from UNH who helped us, actually made the students sign up for a particular time slot, so there were no more people than X number of people in the room at any one time. Usually, we just go to the, we still work with the university, we're given a time to go to, probably sitting in front of one of the dining halls for three or four hours on a particular day, and students just come, they stop by. We have not, almost every student, by the way, who registers on Election Day, almost every student, every person, has an ID with them. They're reasonably prepared. Almost every one of them has proof of where they live, on campus or off campus, or in a house because they just moved here. It's, that part is pretty well-ironed out now, I must say, with the university.
I have one question, which I regret. I did not ask your predecessor and the speakers before you, and that is, if you could think of one or two things that would have a positive impact on increasing voter confidence, what would those items be?
Volunteer in your own town, help out, understand that it's your neighbors, maybe your next-door neighbor who is actually one of those election people that you're not trusting. You may not know that they have a position, but it's time that you found out. New Hampshire is full of, we have a few cities, but we're full of little towns, so most of them are looking for volunteers.
Thank you very much. Now we will proceed, are there any other public officials that did not sign, but would like to have an opportunity to speak? Seeing none, we will now go to the public comment portion of our meeting, and that will be in force until 4:30 when we have a termination time. So we'll start with, I believe, Ms. Barnes. Please state where you're from and after your name.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing us to speak today. I am Regina Barnes, and I am from Hampton. And a little bit about my background, I was a bank auditor for nine years. All over New England, we travel, and we do audits. England, we travel, and we do audits twice a year. And after that, I was served as selectman in the town of Hampton for six years. So I'm quite, I can relate to what the clerks go through, anyone that works in the town hall, it's public service and it is very demanding. But I want to make clear that this does not have anything to do with the jobs that our town clerk, city clerks, or elections officials have. Because what they swore an oath to, and I took that same oath twice, is to the Constitution, the US Constitution and the state constitution. And then we also have laws in the state of New Hampshire. Now, the problem with some of the election laws in the state of New Hampshire is that they never went through the proper process in amending the Constitution. Because a constitutional amendment has to go to the public body of the state to vote on, and that hasn't happened in quite some time. So while I'm confident that they are following all the state statutes in regards to the elections, I'm concerned that some of these state statutes are repugnant to the state constitution. And one of those is RSA's 65640, which adopted the machines on a trial basis, the electronic ballot counting devices is actually what they should be referred to. So now we have all this nationwide things coming out. And I know New Hampshire Voter Integrity has done excellent work with some information in New Hampshire. But I can tell you, after sitting at the polls pretty much all day long for the past six years, town elections, primaries, state elections, that anyone that volunteers is doing their town a great service, and I encourage that. But the problem we have is amendment constitutional law versus the color of law. And they are in direct conflict when it comes to elections. And as a prior auditor, I just want to say that we cannot make any conclusions whether or not there is or is not voter fraud until we do some type of reconciliation and audit of what machine tallies are saying and comparing them to the paper documentation, which is the paper ballot. And that has never happened in this state, and I would like to see it happen soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, yes?
Just so I can understand, aren't all of the recounts a sort of audits of the machines when the recounts are held?
Does it have to be any of the electorships that you're voting?
When a recount is held to verify or to double-check the accuracy of the count, when some candidate brings a challenge to ask for recount, and those recounts are held by the Secretary of State, aren't those audits for the machines to verify whether or not they were accurate?
Ms. Barnes, would you please step to the microphone for your answer? Thank you.
The problem I have with the recounts, now I know Hampton's had four, I believe, in the past several years, is that they're not looking at the whole picture. And until we look at the whole picture, which has never been done before, we are relying on, in essence, a third party because my, my town moderator has publicly testified that the, the, I can't think of the word, but the memory card that goes into the machines is coming from a third party that I believe the business is in Salem, New Hampshire. So we are in essence, every single town and city in New Hampshire is outsourcing the counting of ballots, and it's not being done by the town moderator and the town clerk and anyone who helps them on Election Day. Because it's already predetermined by a memory card that has never been verified completely.
And just to be clear, you're asking that an audit be done in every community on, at every election by the town clerk and moderator to assure that what comes from the machines is the same as what is on the paper ballots?
That is what I'm asking, and I would like it to be arranged at the state level so that obviously it can be done in a precise manner throughout the state.
Okay. Thank you. Next on our list is Brenda Town.
Good afternoon, committee. I want to thank you all very much for allowing me the time to speak. I brought a presentation, not realizing that we didn't have an overhead projector, so I would ask the committee if I could submit that to you after I speak so that you have it for the record. Would that be okay? Okay. So I would like to be able to submit this material after I speak because I was unaware that we didn't have an overhead projector.
Right, we, we apologize for not having the ability to project your presentation, but I will say that I've been on your website, I have seen your videos, I have watched 70% of them, and so I'm familiar with, with your presentation and appreciate you being here to, to talk with us.
So does that mean you will accept the material?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The material will be accepted and we can put it up on the website.
Okay, thank you very much, I really appreciate it. I just wanted to start with a little bit about me. I am a daughter of a World War II Marine who fought two terms in the Pacific. And he did that because on the first term, when he tore, when he came back, all his friends were dead. And he couldn't bear to go back to his neighborhood without his friends. I raised four kids, they were raised in this state, and three of my sons are military, one's still active at Lejeune. And so I take with my whole heart, I love New Hampshire. I love everything about New Hampshire, and I love our country. And my family loves it so much that they personally have put their lives on the line and skin in the game. And so when it came to voting, voting integrity, I got involved after the 2020 election because I wanted to find out if our business, if our processes were good, if they were solid. Now professionally, I have been a group controller for a $1 billion Fortune 50 company. I run a $100 million business unit. I'm on the board of the largest employee-owned company in the country. And so my background is fiduciary control and audit. And so when it came to our 2020 election results, I wanted to get involved and employ those skills. So working with a large team of folks, and you referenced that, you're aware, I participated as a, as a member, and we sent out for the first time ever, a lot of requests to do a citizens audit. And so because the state has never done an audit, it was taken upon itself by the citizens to do this hard work. And when I tell you it was hard work, I really do mean it's hard work. The information, the data is scattered everywhere, it's in all different formats, it's in an incredibly difficult process to find out how things tie together. So we issued 350 FOIA 91A requests, we raised $100,000 in under a week to get people involved, we have 800, 8,000 people following us on three platforms and participating, 400 active volunteers, we've tapped into some national experts, and we've spent thousands of hours dedicated to collecting this data, organizing it, analyzing it. And then on top of that, we've done 1,200 hours of knocking on doors canvassing, as well as 400 hours with what I'll call desk canvassing. So I'm going to share with you the results of what all of this hard work yielded. And hopefully you'll find it important enough that you can integrate it into the committee recommendations.
If I may interject, what we are very interested, and I'm looking forward to hearing your information, but what we're very interested in as a committee is what kind of solutions to the problems that you're going to discuss you feel would be appropriately considered by the committee. So just keep that uppermost in your mind, and I would appreciate it.
Thank you so much for asking. You know, we have seen a lot of things, and I think through the analysis, when I share with you what we found, it will be a nice link into what we are recommending, okay? So there were many things that raised election concerns for us. In 2020, New Hampshire had a 255% growth in absentee ballots, which made up one-third of all of the votes we had cast in our state. 9% of all of our votes were same-day registration. And many anomalies showed up in the voter turnout. In one big example that I'll share with you is the voter turnout in two of our largest counties. Between the years 2008 and 2012, the Rockingham County had turnout of about 7% Republican and a shrinking turnout of Democratic. And then in 2012 to 2016, there was a 3% growth in Republican turnout and a decline of 0.2% in Democrat. But in 2020, the election, the Democrat turnout and the Republican turnout were as follows, 6% increase in voter turnout in the Republican Party, but a 25.1% increase in the Democrat Party. And that happened over a period of time when there was less than 4% total growth over the decade in that particular county. It's a very similar picture for Hillsborough. And Hillsborough and Rockingham are our two most populous counties. And so this raised flags for us. And just to give you those numbers, in 2016, there was no growth at all in the Republican Party, and there was a decline in the turnout for the election of 2.7%. But in 2020, the Republicans showed a 4.6% turnout, and the Democrats showed a 24% turnout increase. So these numbers are a very big anomaly when you consider over the last decade, the entire population of New Hampshire only grew at 4%. So these are the things that irrespective of your party, were just so unusual that it made us want to roll up our sleeves and get involved. So we made national news, as you guys know, we made national news with Wyndham. Wyndham splashed all over the, all over the national news, we're off by 1,300 votes. So that was really one of the things that made us scratch our head and say, okay, that's a nice round number, let's really do something about it. So at the same time, again, we have so many volunteers, somebody came across the movie Kill Chain. Are you guys familiar with the movie Kill Chain? It's a documentary about the election in Georgia, it was a senate race. And in it, they were evaluating why one machine out of all the machines in this race for a Republican candidate, whereas all the other machines favored a Democratic candidate, popped. And they said it was a one in a million situation that when you had a bank of machines, three machines would perform in one manner with favoring a party, and a single machine would, would perform in a different manner. So we started digging in, and we pulled, let me just pass by that so you don't have to listen to that. We started pulling machine tapes on every town we could get. And we created a master report, which I will provide to you, that shows machine performance by every single town by machine. Across the top of our slides, you'll see the registered party and how they voted. So if you have an overall, I'll give you an example, in Wyndham, the overall party affiliation was 34% Democrat, 11% Independent, and 53% Republican. And that was the composition. And what our report does is it shows you the performance of every single machine and how they performed relative to how the people in the town were registered. And what we've found is that there is one machine in Wyndham, but pretty much one machine in every town, and three machines in Merrimack, that statistically cannot perform in any manner like the registered voter distribution. And it's uncanny. We also are showing in town after town that the voter turnout has been higher than the census with the appropriate aged voter. So what we'd like to challenge you on is our, Regina was just up ahead of me, and her issue that she raised was we want to measure the accuracy of our machines. This past year, I had an opportunity to write an LSR on a subset of, an audit of the 2020 election. Our goal was simply to take a small piece of New Hampshire and to audit it from beginning to end to find out where the process gaps were, and then make recommendations. Like I told you, I'm a finance geek, that's just something we would do. Unfortunately, it was canned and put off to the side and left out to study, which is a nice way of killing a bill. So we couldn't get an audit on a subset, and we have never audited the state in total. I had an opportunity while writing all of these LSRs, and I, and I had a chance to write too, to speak in depth with Barb Griffin, our election law committee chair. And when we spoke about the issues in New Hampshire, Barbara shared with me that the election law committee was already aware of what the issues were in our election process, that they were very familiar with it, and that an audit would not turn up anything new that they weren't aware of. And further, that our state has no funding to be able to do investigative or audit work to force corrective action or to find out where the issues are and who's not following the rules. I did want to touch on another huge anomaly that would indicate we have a problem. So New Hampshire has a practice that every 10 years, we purge the voter roll. For the 2020 election, we, we made headlines in the, across the country because New Hampshire came out third in the country for voter turnout relative to registration. We had a 72.2% voter turnout. That's pretty good. Well, fast forward 10 months later, New Hampshire purged their voter rolls the first time in 10 years. When we recalculate the number of people who actually turned out, New Hampshire would have a 92.5% voter turnout. That number is mind-blowing. It is 20 points higher than anybody in the country's voter turnout to their registration. We have a problem. I know there was a question when Regina was up about the recounts and the integrity of those recounts when a candidate asks for one. So I'm going to give you the Wyndham audit example. So in Wyndham, there were four machines used. The selectmen, as you know, this was a political explosion that got with a lot of national attention. The, the selectmen asked in a town hearing to the CEO of LHS if we were going to put the ballots through the machines, and would it corrupt the election data? The CEO said it would, but there was an intention to back up all of the cards so that we would have the original preserved and it wouldn't be contaminated with the audit activity. Unfortunately, we have on video the audit team wiping out all of our memory cards and resetting them to pre-election status. And I can provide that video to the committee as well. When you set an election machine to pre-election status, you wipe out all of the data from the election. Now, if you want to find out if there is a problem with the machine and whether there had been a hack in the machine, our lead auditor was Harry Hurstey. Harry Hurstey was the feature analyst in Kill Chain, the movie that I told you about in advance. I also have an affidavit from Harry, from his Wisconsin testimony, where he states that if a hack is present in the machine, once you wipe it out, the machines will be reset and there will be no more visibility into the hack. So with that as your background, I'll provide you, right off the Secretary of State's website, the ballot count on Election Day versus the ballot count of those same 10,000 ballots run through our machines, and they're run after the hack. And then we can match them to the hand count that was performed by the audit team. What you will find is that the hand count of the Wyndham results for their elections were in line with the reset machines and were off by thousands from the day of the election. What this shows is that there was a hack in the machine that was reset by one of the people conducting the audit. And I'll provide all that information to you so that you have it clearly and you understand we have a huge issue with the integrity of we have a huge issue with the integrity of our machines.
Ms. Towne, may I interject for a moment?
Sure.
First of all, thank you for your testimony. As I said earlier, we have a time constraint. If I divide the amount of time left by the number of people in line, it averages out a 10-minute presentation. Could I suggest, if you could get to your point right now about the, we're looking for solutions to these many problems you've identified. If you could summarize those solutions so that we can get that in the record, go through the rest of the testimony. If there's time at the end, I'll be more than happy to let you come to the podium again. But I would appreciate your being courteous to your fellow citizens and allow them the time that they can present by summarizing at this point.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can I, I will summarize one other piece of information that we have, and then I'll go into our recommendations.
Thank you.
So after all of this, we did a physical canvas, and I believe Al Brandano, who testified a while ago, did speak.
Last, last week.
Last week, yes. He did talk about the results of that canvas. We knocked door to door. What we found is that on average, 10% of the people that we reached had not voted or there were issues with their vote, such as it was a commercial address or it was somebody who lived in the home prior. With that information, we collaborated between a two-town canvas, and we found that prior owner voters may be an issue, where they were never removed from the registration, but votes were cast in their names. So we did a desk canvas. We took the voting roll and we matched it against the home sales in the town. And when we found somebody who had sold a home, we validated against the movement of their deed to the new homeowner and the new voter. And in most cases, what we found is that the new voter, as well as the old voter, had voted in the election. What I wanted to provide to you today, and this is an open item from Al, was that he had an open item, that he could present these 1,100 affidavits or data points that we have for you where this incident happened.
I would encourage the committee members to go to the website. This is all explained on the website as well, so you'll get the details there as well.
Could you please say the website for the record?
So the video that summarizes a lot of the information is on Rumble, and it's called "Hacking Democracy: New Hampshire," and it points to a lot of this information. My contact information, I'd be glad to share, and I would be happy to provide copies of any of the working information, and I will provide this presentation. So you asked me to wrap it up.
Yes.
So I wanted to give you this because people say, give me the evidence, show me the money. And we have evidence, and this is just one data point. So here are the things we want you to know, then we will tie them into the recommendation. We want you to know that we don't believe our elections are free from interference. We want you to know that. We have evidence that needs to be acted on. We have problems with separation of duties. We have outsourced our machine programming and management without the consent of the people to a sole source. And we have never had an audit of the integrity of our process. No business on the planet would do that. You would never put your money in a bank that did that. And the SEC won't allow a company to trade publicly without that. Our politicians and our leaders have ignored us. We had 50 LSRs in process this past season, and only one made it through to the governor's desk. And we expect New Hampshire to follow its constitution and the law. Voting machines do not follow the New Hampshire Constitution, which clearly outlines individual officials and parties are to count the votes. And New Hampshire has destroyed evidence within the 20-month federal requirement window, and so we are in violation of federal law. So the bottom line, what do we want?
Solutions.
We want solutions. So here, we want transparency, all right? So we want the election data that is available to our politicians for $25, which is voter registration in Excel format with voting history available to the public, so we can get a baseline of what's going to happen. And we had to recreate all of this, so you can only imagine the level of effort. It is arduous to figure out what's going on. We also want digital copies of the ballots. This was part of our LSRs, but unfortunately, we were told by the Secretary of State that there might be a possible fraud situation where somebody would write their name on a ballot and process it, and therefore it could be sold. Well, if we've all watched 2000 Mules, or if we all have cell phones, we know this really is not a true problem. We need ballot transparency, and by doing that, the public can do their own audits, we can do our own counts, and life will be good. We need election data readily available in auditable format, and that includes, if we continue to use the machines, the machine tapes. We shouldn't have to go and bag, borrow, and steal for those tapes.
And I will just make mention, the 12th of July, we are going to be having our next meeting, and we will be discussing, we will have a demonstration of the machines, and it's going to be focused on the presentation on the machines and how they work and so forth. And the Ballot Law Commission is doing a similar meeting regarding the machines that morning at 9:00 AM, so.
Okay, that would be great.
We are aware of these issues.
All right, well, with that, we're looking for reform, all right? So if you cannot safeguard our votes from interference, we want the machines removed, and we want to go to hand count. Canada, England, Germany, Switzerland, France, and many other countries hand count every election. Why aren't we doing it? What is the hangup? And then finally, we don't ever want to see poll books open to New Hampshire. It's another vulnerability. I watched Joe Gahn Pulitzer hack a poll book live in the Georgia Senate race this past 2021. Yeah, it was 2021. And then another key thing for us is audit. Audit, audit, audit. Good fences make good neighbors. Good reviews keep people on the right path. That means we want sample audits after every federal election, a statistical sample audit. You don't have to audit the whole thing, but statistically, go in there and validate the results. And we want a sample audit of the 2020 election. If anything could have gone crazy, it was that election. And we would like to have an audit on a sample of that so that we can see from bow to stern where the issues are, so that we can make legislation to fix them. So I thank you very much for giving me the time. I would be glad to help and support in any way I can. Our team is ready to provide any data, and we're passionate because truly, we love New Hampshire, we want every vote to count. And I don't want my dad's friends who died in the Pacific to have died in vain. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Brenda. We will, I'm sure, be talking to you. Any questions from the committee at this time? Yes.
I have a question. Thank you for the, thank you for the data. And I had heard about the documentary, and I thought I ought to take a look at it, and I have to confess, I haven't, I haven't seen the whole thing yet. But the first part of it presented a lot of data similar to what you presented today. And I'm going to go back and look at it again, but I kind of skipped to the end, and I was troubled when I saw a lot of accusatory comments toward people from throughout the state, as well as what I seemed to be threatening remarks. Yeah, there was a picture of some guys with a gun and said, "Don't be intimidated." And when I saw that, it sort of compromised what I thought was maybe the useful part of the data that you selected. It seemed kind of intimidating. Could you just comment on that?
Sure. First of all, there is no intention to intimidate anybody.
I'm sorry, please come to the mic.
I just want to assure you, there is no intention to intimidate anybody. I think the big thing is, over the past two years, we have repeatedly heard from our leaders and the press that there is no such thing as election fraud or issues, that we've had a perfect election, that the 2020 election was the most secure in history. And so people have been silenced. And what you hear from me today, and the frustrations from those who created the video, is that we don't want to be silenced. We want you to hear us and act upon the data. You've been provided the data, there's no excuse now. You have it, it's on the record, we'll provide it, we'll provide the source data, we have an entire database of everything we're talking to. And we look forward to providing it to you so we can fix things together. Thank you.
The committee appreciates the attitude that you have brought this information to our attention, and we hope that we can work together in a constructive way to make sure that your concerns are addressed and that it is incorporated appropriately in the work that we are considering.
Well, thank you very, very much.
We have a question from Brad.
This is a minor point in your testimony, but the poll book issue, my recollection is, and I could be wrong, that the poll book, electronic poll book advent in New Hampshire was advocated by some town and city officials. The Secretary of State's office resisted it, and the legislature passed a law that enabled it against the recommendation of the then-Secretary of State. Is my recollection correct?
That is my understanding as well, yes.
And the problem is that the poll books which are networked can be hacked?
Yes.
Now, because I never have been, and after all this process, I never want to be a local election official. But isn't there a backup to the poll books with a written registration that can be checked? I mean, my understanding of what the problem with the poll books was, if it's hacked properly, they all go down and all hell breaks loose at an election.
That's one way that they can infiltrate an election, whoever is trying to interfere with us. But they can also use that as a mechanism to get into the network and access other computers that are on the network as well. So there's a general concern that the minute you introduce a technology, it can create a new vulnerability. And so that's the challenge, right? How do we secure it so that every vote is counted and every voice is heard?
When you come on the 12th, because I have no doubt that you'll come on the 12th, you will hear about the standards that were adopted by the Ballot Law Commission last year for the consideration of new ballot counting devices if they're going to be approved, one of which was non-hackability, so.
Okay.
We have one question here from Mandy Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for providing and was providing us with the information that's to come. But one thing that I wanted to ask you about, because I think maybe it would be helpful to just have a discussion about it, perhaps isn't in the materials. I haven't been audited, so I'm trying to envision what it's like when somebody knocks on the door, what your experience has been with doing that, and if you have an idea of what percentage of those households you actually got a response from that day. I know when I, the last time I did campaigning door to door, it seemed like there were, well, there were a lot of people who just weren't home, or, you know, you could see them through the window, maybe they just didn't feel like talking to you. And so I wonder about that, and also what percentage roughly of the time people did come to the door but did not agree to comply with your questions.
All right, so I'm going to answer them in steps, okay?
You can, you know, pretend I'm being audited if you want.
No, so how an audit works, so I'll use my experience from General Electric or Hewlett Packard. We have standard processes that we have drafted because we're ISO certified, just like we have laws that have standard processes that people are supposed to follow to manage their, manage the work that they do. So I have no doubt that our town clerks are doing probably a stellar job at following the process. The second part of an audit is just like when you balance your checkbook. If you put money in the account, did it show up in the bank? Did it show up on time and in the manner in which you expected to see it? And so you would, you would look at that process to make sure that it all balances out. So from an audit standpoint, we could, we would take a sample town. And let's take, say we take one town, we would take the registration, and we would make sure that the registration matched what the state had for people who voted that day, because we have a manual checklist, right? So what we've found in our audit is that those don't always match. So the town has a paper of who they had voted, and then the state has who they have voted. So you check to make sure those match, and then you try to figure out why. The next thing that you try to do is you process ballots, right? And you do a hand count. And does the hand count reflect what the machine count has?
I hate to interrupt, but are you going to get to what, the door to door, you actually do door to door canvassing?
Right, so I thought you asked me two things.
I understand all.
Okay, so that's the audit part.
Thank you for what you're talking about.
Okay, so, all right, so that one's done. As far as the door to door, we knocked on approximately 1,200 doors, and we had about 50% of the people answer the door. So you're absolutely right, not everybody's home. We tried to pick beautiful fall days so that they'd be out raking leaves, so we could talk to them. In my experience, and I did a lion's share of the canvassing, I've only had two people who turned me away and didn't want to participate. Again, the way that we approached this was, it was not a party issue. For us, it simply was, did you vote in the 2020 election? And did you vote in person, or did you vote in absentee? And we would ask them their name, and then we'd actually confirm if there were other people in the home that voted. We had an app that had a digital version of the town checklist, so we could see every voter in the home. And with that, we would be able to ask, oh, did Chester vote in this election? And they'd say, oh, Chester? Well, Chester, Chester Smith? Oh, he, he sold us the house two years ago. And so we would get that exchange. People were very happy, actually, surprisingly, because we were a little bit nervous, nobody likes to do this work, but they were actually happy that somebody was checking. Because it was done in a non-threatening way, and we just really want, at the end of the day, to feel confident that every vote counted.
In interest of getting to the next testimony, this is all on the website. You'll see.
Well, I have looked.
Yeah, it's explained, I think, so we'll move along.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want, for the record and for people to hear, as well as myself, what is that website?
New Hampshire NHVIG is a master website that has some of our information on it. But I will, as I said, gladly.
We do have it because I received it from the Secretary of State's office and communicated with the committee, so it should be in your inbox.
I just wanted people to hear that.
Yeah.
Yep. And then, as I said, I will make available my presentation and have that along with my contact info and be at your disposal, however you need my help.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I, very quickly, I know that we have, the state senator from Portsmouth is in our midst, please come and say hello. I apologize for not getting to you sooner, I know you have an appointment you have to leave for at 2:30.
Yeah, well, thank you, Chairman, I greatly appreciate that, and nice to be here with all of you. There are some old friends up here, and it's nice to be with you today. My name is State Senator Rebecca Perkins-Cuoca, and I represent District 21, which includes the city of Portsmouth, here in the presence of another who used to represent District 21. I'm here today to talk about election integrity and confidence, and how we continue to have elections in New Hampshire that are free, fair, secure, and accessible. And I did just want to mention really quickly, before I read my brief remarks, Mr. Cook, that I was involved in the poll books legislation from this legislative session. I do want you to know that the poll books approved in New Hampshire are not permitted to be connected to the Internet. So I just wanted to provide you with that technical.
Thank you.
Clarification. First, I want to start by reminding people that here in New Hampshire, our elections are safe and secure. I'm going to repeat that. Here in New Hampshire, our elections are safe and secure. There has been no data to support any evidence of voter fraud in New Hampshire. And yet, we are expending time and energy on legislation, and respectfully, this commission to address whether our elections are safe and secure. Why? Well, because there has been misinformation circulating and recirculating that there is a problem. The change in voter confidence to even the casual political observer is not an accident. There was a more than two-year campaign telling voters that their vote would not count if a certain candidate lost, and if certain candidates lost, it meant the election was rigged. That campaign has had a direct correlation to voter attitudes toward our elections. rigged. That campaign has had a direct correlation to voter attitudes toward our elections. In New Hampshire, we have a story even deeper than the national issue. It goes back to 2016, when then-Governor Alex Anunu told us that buses of people were coming over the border. This is a lie that has been repeated innumerable times. The lie was introduced to justify SB 3. Five years and $5 million later, the court struck down that decision, noting that it could disenfranchise voters. Bills like SB 3 speak to some of the things I see in the State House that also lead to the decline of voter confidence. Whenever a new bill gets introduced with a voter fraud, it furthers the same misinformation story. As the justification, it leads people outside the State House to call into question whether our elections are safe. As election officials, we owe the state and our election officials more than that. Our elections are safe and secure. We need not further legislation, which is a solution looking for a problem. Further, I feel it is important to note that the Secretary of State's office has an important leadership role to play here. The Secretary of State must very carefully choose how it navigates these times, and of utmost importance, support only legislation which is truly going to improve the rights of our residents, our citizens, our neighbors, and our next generation are disabled to vote. It is of utmost importance that the Secretary of State appropriately address laws that question whether people should have faith in our elections, naming misinformation where it occurs, and reminding our electorate that our elections are safe and secure. To do anything else, which as someone very close to the issue, I'm concerned is the case now, at best sends mixed signals to voters about our elections, and at worst confirms the voters, in my opinion, unfounded fears. To this point, at this very committee meetings last week, Secretary Scanlon unfortunately casually stated that one could theoretically vote in New Hampshire without being a citizen. That is true in the same way that other hypothetical things might be true. You could start a fire, or you could commit vandalism, but those things, like voting in New Hampshire without being a citizen, are a crime. I hope that we can all be part of making it clear that New Hampshire has never seen the case of someone voting who is not a citizen, instead of potentially playing into some of the fears that are out there. So how do we move forward and strengthen our elections? Well, one, New Hampshire should join most of the rest of the country and implement automated and online voter registration. This is a win for voters, making it easier to update their election information. It's also a win for election officials, as they will spend less time deciphering bad handwriting and dealing with paper forms. It is also a win for voter confidence, as forms without errors and people being able to complete their forms before Election Day lead to better outcomes. For every voter that registers before Election Day, it is one less voter who might have to sign an affidavit because they forgot a piece of information at home. Less affidavits mean less potential investigations, which will lead, again, to more confidence in our elections. Second, New Hampshire should join the Electronic Registration Information Center, or ERIC. I've previously suggested this as a member of the Election Law Committee up at the State House and in the Senate. ERIC compares names and other data from other states to see if a voter exists on two voter rolls. If a voter has moved and does exist on two voter rolls in separate states, they can be removed, helping to keep our voter rolls clean. And it is a system that elected officials from both parties have supported. I rarely find myself agreeing with Governor Ron DeSantis of Florida, but we both support joining ERIC. Those steps are solid ones that we can take, and watching how we talk about our safe and secure elections is also incredibly important. This issue depends on all of us stepping up and doing our part. I hope as you continue the work of this committee, you work to make the input you take as constructive as possible, and that you, as committee members, are able to discern the truth that our elections are safe and secure from the rest, which should inform any decision we make concerning our sacred New Hampshire elections. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify, and I am happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you for your guidance, and we take it seriously and appreciate you being here. Are there any questions for the senator? Yes, Andrew?
Senator, thank you very much. Andrew Jordan is from Concord. So your counterpart from Concord, my state senator, spoke in the same basic words last month, in that there was no fraud. And again, the groups that have spoken before you today, I don't believe use the word fraud, but they use discrepancies. And that's what I'm trying to get, the misinformation that's out there. It was proven by the Attorney General that there was discrepancies. And I need both parties to understand that the word discrepancies is real, and that the audit, and that the forensic audit was real, and it found stuff. So that's where the misinformation goes one way, but then also, something did happen. So that's where the public opinion, people say, okay, we hear a little bit of this, a little bit of that, but 146-page audit that came out from the Attorney General's office showed there were discrepancies. And that's what people truly need to understand, that the fraud word was not used, but there's improvements.
Thank you. I don't think there's a question.
You don't need to respond if you don't want to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you very much, committee members.
Next on our list, and I will say, if you have testified in the past, and my memory doesn't recall that you did, I hope in honesty you would wait until the end of testimony, the testimony period, so that people who haven't testified before have an opportunity to do so. The next person on my list is William Hall.
He did testify.
He did testify before. We'll move him to the end. Bob Perry.
Thank you, members of the commission. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you, Jim. Having served in the House Election Law Committee, Bob Perry, Town of Stratford. Having served on the House Election Law Committee for seven years and following legislation since leaving the legislature, I am acutely aware of the restrictions placed on voters over time, and the boisterous assertions by individuals who, while waving their cellphones before us, claim to possess irrefutable proof of voter fraud. Some claim recklessly that Democrats rely on voter fraud to win elections. They claim erroneously that the AG's office is unwilling to initiate investigations. I submit to you that any lack of confidence in New Hampshire's elections is self-inflicted. These irresponsible accusations distract from the fraud currently being perpetrated upon the voter, our citizenry, and the Constitution by way of an unwillingness by too many to accept a legitimate election result not to their liking, despite Governor Anunu's repeated public statements that New Hampshire's elections are free and fair and are the gold standard for others to follow. Our concerns must not be solely focused on the one or two deep thinkers who commit voter fraud. Instead, our concerns must include the fact that 50 election deniers are running in 20 states, organizing for a potential unilateral rejection of election results, and the wholesale dismissal of millions of legitimate votes cast. Our concerns must include the fact that an out-of-control Ohio legislature is flipping off the courts by utilizing maps ruled five times by the courts to be unconstitutional. Our concerns must include the fact that an out-of-control Florida governor has ignored the will of the voters, and in defiance of Florida's constitutional amendment against gerrymandering, has managed to impose his own gerrymandered redistricting map upon the people for the 2020 election. I don't need to remind anyone that the public trial of the former president related to the worst kind of election fraud begins in two days. The best means of building voter confidence is for the Secretary of State's office to push back against this homegrown misguided focus on voter fraud. I also suggest funds are available to be used for this purpose, to better inform the public of changes to voting laws, and can be used to instill confidence in our elections based on fact and based on reality. And I thank you.
We thank you for your testimony. Next is Wayne Preston.
He signed on one last, he just left.
He just left, okay. Wayne Preston is gone. Mackenzie St. Germain.
I spoke before, so.
Okay, thank you. I thought maybe you had. Elizabeth Mooney.
Short and sweet. My name is Elizabeth Mooney. I represent no one but myself. I live in Portsmouth, and I have two concerns. One is, and I think the state senator mentioned something, I was wondering how you track people who vote twice. We actually have a candidate in the congressional primary who managed to vote in New Jersey and in New Hampshire, and, you know, I'm wondering if you can track violations of driving from one state to another. You can't get away with not paying the parking ticket in Boston and come here and think the DMV isn't going to find you. It would seem like whatever the state senator talked about, that electronic system of comparison would really be a good thing. And the second thing that concerns me is, I can't remember the proper term, I think it's about electors, but what concerns me is that it doesn't seem like we have in the state law, faithless electors, that's what it's called, something that requires all of the electors to follow what the popular vote is in the state. I mean, the assumption is because, as I understand it, because both, there are four and four, one, four Republicans, four Democrats, that they will. And I think the last time somebody didn't go along with it was 1820, so, but the past can be prelude to the future, and I would like some confidence that the electors don't, unless we've all vote for Mickey Mouse, or, you know, something insane, that they are required to follow the will of the people. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd only make one comment, that the congressional candidate who voted twice was determined by the Attorney Generals to have done that legally.
That's a bad process.
Well, given the timing of when he registered, where he registered.
It wasn't the same election.
No, he voted in New Hampshire in the primary. The New Jersey primary was later. He had moved back to New Jersey after his candidate, who I believe was Governor Christie, had dropped out. And then he registered in New Jersey, which he was entitled to do, and then voted in its primary.
I just want to say, he's not the, okay, I also remember there was somebody from New York State who had a second home, and we've got a lot of people like that in this state, you know, they're in two states. And he managed to vote in Florida and then come up and vote in New York. And I don't know how they caught him, but it may speak to that electronic system that, you know, that, anyway, so.
I believe, I believe the statistic in one of the presidential elections was, I think it was the 2000 election, which was so elongated, when they had the recount in Florida, that there were probably 10,000 people who voted in Manhattan and Palm Beach County.
And that's one thing that the previous testimony by Brenda Towne, they have found that there are discrepancies, as has been pointed out by Andy on the committee. These discrepancies have to do with people having sold a house, you know, those are the kinds of issues that are causing concern. And we're, I don't know that we're going to be able to solve all these problems, but we need to identify them and transparently deal with them so that people have more confidence in the fact that those are being dealt with.
Thank you.
So thank you. Next, we have Derek Arnold.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
You want me to hold the camera on you?
If you want.
Actually, we are, we are doing it right there.
I travel state to state with my camera, because it's transparency and it doesn't lie. So.
We appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you for having me, and thank you for being here as well. I just hope we can get some solution out of why we're here and why we're taking our time. I'm actually here representing we, the people, our Constitution, our sovereign beings, sovereignty, okay, not incorporated, okay, being capitalized. And my grandfather, George Arnold, served on three ships in World War II, his last ship being USS Independence. He swam back on that ship saving lives. My other grandfather was Norman Livisage in the Battle of the Bulge, fighting against tyranny under General Patton. He also lived. He is not alive now. However, they served, they took an oath to serve, to protect, and to preserve. And I'm here to ask all the people, all the ladies and gentlemen right here in front of me, are you all under oath? Have you taken an oath? Yes or no? I'm asking you. I'm in front of you speaking. Have all of you been under oath?
For this committee, no, we have not.
To serve, to be servants of we, the people. Have you taken an oath? Because your oath has a bond on it. It's called the surety bond. And until we get rid of the machines, we will not have fair and secure elections. When Derek Arnold, that turned 18 in 1989, before I graduated high school, to this day has never voted in my life, because I knew in 89 it was corrupt. When there's millions of dollars being poured in for an election by Zuckerberg, by other incorporations or other identities, or however you want to say it, I'm not a public speaker. I do not. I come organically, and I do not script any speech. However, the day when our elections turn safe, secure, fair, and free, I will then put my signature and my endorsement on a candidate. Until we have candidates that are going to live up and stand on their oath with transparency and serve we, the people, the Constitution, okay, we're about ready to call out all bonds, all the surety bonds on everybody's oath, including our military. We've got it all. We know the truth. Listen, I have heard people stand up here and say, our elections are safe and secure? That is not transparency, because when a machine is hooked up to the Internet, it is unconstitutional. When is enough enough? When does a little bit of fraud turn into enough fraud? When does a little bit of, let's see, inconsistencies turn into enough is enough? I am 51 years old. I have my seventh grandbaby on the way, and I have four children. I don't care about putting my name on a vote unless it's going to be with integrity and character. And until we have that, until we reach solution and resolution, we will not have fair and secure elections. And anybody that is on the other side of serving their Constitution and protecting their Constitution and their country from foreign and domestic attacks, none of us in this room are going to be safe. Our elections worldwide affect every one of us in this room, and you ought to be ashamed of yourself if you do not want to stand on your oath. Because I'm calling it out right now. I will swear myself under oath to the military to serve and protect at 51 years old, like my two grandfathers did. We've been in the war as warriors since World War I. When are we going to fix it? When are we going to fix 2020? Why are we looking at 2022? Why are we going to 2024 when we will be no more? Why are the millions and billions of dollars poured into elections, why are they not, why is that, those dollars not put in to make sure we have a secure election? Why? Because there's a whole lot more around this whole war right now than just a fraudulent selection, because it was not a fair election. I watched Arizona. I was at the Georgia State Capitol shortly ago. I was at the White House before. I was at the White House before I showed back up in New Hampshire. I was there May 17th. I was there for five days. And I travel state to state. I was at the Texas border wall last year. Ken knows me. I spoke at the State Capitol in Concord in November last year, did I not, Ken? And I'm speaking right now, and I'm not trying to change minds here. I am trying to change the hearts of any sovereign being sitting in a seat or standing up right now. If you have taken an oath, expect the bond on your oath, the surety bond, to be called out. We will call every oath out in this country, in this world, if that's what it takes. And I will not quit, because there is no quit. And when? So, please, please, committee, please be winners for we the people. Please do your duty and serve we the people. When you go get these solutions, when we have in-person voting, ID voting, I can take a picture of my vote. I can go on the internet and find out what outcome my vote came to. Because when I go to research and find out if my name was ever used on any ballot, then I know it's fraudulent, because I've never voted in my life. And I will not start voting until the people that go under oath to serve, to preserve, and to protect their constitution, my name won't go on there, but I will tell you what I promise, everybody what I will do. I will be involved with an operation we the people overlook to make sure everybody that took an oath to serve, preserve, we the people are doing their duty and doing the job. We will track every dollar that has been gone through every hand. I'm shaking right now. And I'm very passionate. And it's about my kids, my grandbabies, everybody, every people in this room. If you've gone on the wrong side and stepped away from serving we the people, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. You ought to leave this building. You ought to go look in the mirror and ask yourself, was it fear? Was I fear? Any questions for Derek Arnold? Because I will keep coming back, and I will not stop until things are done and fixed.
Do you have a specific solution that you think should be implemented?
Yes.
It'd be good for us to hear the solutions. We understand the problems that you've just expressed, but we would be interested in solutions.
Well, here's my personal opinion in what would bring me to go vote. If Derek Arnold can physically, because if I'm able to walk, I'm able to physically go in and vote. If I'm able to be pushed in in a wheelchair and sign a ballot, I'm able to vote. So, if, when every people go in physically and vote with an ID, not, "I forgot my ID", not, "I forgot my homework," or not, "My dog ate my homework." If you know you have to have an ID to go vote, bring it. We should have that right. We should be able to find out, without things getting erased, of what the outcome of our vote was. Period.
I think that does hap, I'm not sure I understand how you-
Well, the problem is voter rolls, everything, things got erased, things-
No.
Doesn't happen? Doesn't happen. So, when all this proves up-
I think what we, we need to have this conversation on the sidebar. We're looking for solutions to real problems, and there are, there are-
Get rid of the machines, period. There shouldn't be any machines anywhere in this world right now. Because they're hooked up to internet, and we all know that. And you, listen, you can go through an IP address in the bathroom.
I would, I would like to just, at this point-
Yes, they are hooked up to internet, and we've proven it.
Derek, if we can just stick to simple solutions that you-
I gave my solution, get rid of the machines. And a lot of people in this country would say the same thing.
Are there any other questions from the committee?
And a lot of people in other countries, like, let's see, England, where my family was brought here to start the GE plant in Lynn, Massachusetts, my great-grandfather. Okay? So, do we want to go back to reality? Or do we want to keep sweeping things under the rug? Get rid of the machines. In-person voting with voter ID, period. Unless you have a special circumstance why you cannot go in personal to vote, then your vote should not be cast, period. That's the solution. Get rid of the machines.
We appreciate your contributions. We will consider them in our report. And if we have further questions, we'll follow up with you. And are there any questions from the committee at this time?
Thank you very much for the time. I at least had my voice, and I appreciate that. And that's what I'm here for, and no matter what the opinions are everywhere.
We appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Matt from Seabrook.
Hey, guys. Thanks for coming out today. My name is Matt Saborn-Dishwanier. I am the chairman of the New Hampshire Independence Political Action Committee. So, if you happen to be not satisfied with the way things are going, we have some solutions, long-term, of course. We had the CACR 32 this past spring. We had 13 votes affirmative on the roll call, one free to the 13 colonies. So, if you think that this might be a better way of doing things, I was raised to believe that this was the freest country in the world. I no longer think that, but still is home-
Sir, sir, address the chair.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I am a very charismatic individual.
That's, that's not for you to determine.
Sorry, but my apologies, sir. I have business cards if anyone would like. And that's, actually, I'm just making an announcement. That's all. We had 13 votes this past spring for it, and we hope to get more next year. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Next is the Reverend Sarah Rockwell.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can you hear me? Am I, okay. My thanks to the members of the commission for this time. And what I would like to do is, well, let me introduce myself again. I'm the Reverend Sarah Rockwell. I am the rector of St. Andrew's Episcopal Church on the west side of Manchester. And I am a member of the Clergy Caucus of Granite State Organizing Project. And I would like to share with you, for the record in this public session, a letter which we wrote, the Clergy Caucus wrote, to Secretary Scanlon. And it's brief. It won't take long. "We are a diverse group of interfaith clergy, serving faith congregations throughout New Hampshire, and are affiliated with Granite State Organizing Project, the state's largest faith-based grassroots community organizing group. We write to you about our concern over the makeup of the Voter Confidence Commission your office has recently created. The members who comprise the Voter Confidence Commission are individuals who all have experience in various forms of public service, and we trust that they are committed to exploring the state's voting process in order to identify the roots of declining voter confidence here in New Hampshire. Yet we, the Clergy Caucus, are aware that none of the individuals on the commission are people of color. This oversight means that several populations in our state are not being considered in the conversation, and that you are missing an opportunity to learn from their valuable perspective about what it is like for people of color to trust the voting process in our state. While we know that the commission has already had several meetings, we ask that you would include as members some individuals who are not white. The work of ensuring voter confidence is critical in our democracy, and the midterm elections are not far away. Please invite individuals who are people of color onto the commission. Such inclusion can only add strength and integrity to the good work of building voter confidence in, for all Granite staters." And I should say that this letter to Secretary Scanlon has about 45 signatures of clergy throughout the state from various faith traditions. And while it was mailed to the secretary's office, would it be all right for me to hand to you this letter?
Sure, sure. Thank you.
And I don't know if there are any questions, but I'm happy to entertain it.
Any questions?
I think, this isn't really a question, it's more of a comment. We've had testimony before that we shouldn't be the committee, we didn't appoint the committee. But I would encourage you to get as many people from the communities you're talking about, or their representatives, to come and testify for us, just like we had a whole session two years ago when we had the, how to vote in a pandemic, and had recommendations on providing materials in different languages and getting things out. And it would be very helpful for us to hear from them. And so, if you could, through the organizing committee or whatever, get some people to come testify at one of our public sessions, I think it'd be very helpful.
Thank you very much. And we can do that. We are working with various populations and people of color on a lot of issues. And so, yes, we can, just speaking for them now in this case, and certainly we can bring them forward. Thank you.
And I would just add that we were not the choosers. We were selected by the Secretary of State, so-
Yes, you're the chosen.
Well, I wouldn't put it that way, but I would say that our job is to listen. And as my co-chair just stated, we are listening to all members of the community, of all different persuasions. And we are eager to incorporate everybody's testimony into our consideration.
Well, thank you. And actually, that letter, just to reiterate, was to the Secretary of State. So, it was just an opportunity to read it and share it with you and in this room, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Next.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry. Doug Tashner?
It's not really a question. I just want to thank you for coming, and thank you for your perspective.
Next, we will hear from David Holt from Somersworth.
Hello. First, let me say there is no statistically significant fraud or discrepancies in New Hampshire or nationally in our voter system. And I want to come back to the statistically significant words again later on. Just to introduce myself, my name is David Holt. I am from Somersworth. My grandfather lied to go and fight in World War II and was mustered in that war and was not supposed to live, but the only reason that I'm here is that he did. I also grew up here in New Hampshire on a farm, producing the food that a lot of folks eat. So, I'm just a farm boy. I did attend the dairy meeting, which you folks had a while back. And I was unfortunately unable to speak, because there were so many election officials that came in to testify to the fact that there is no statistically significant fraud or discrepancies going on in New Hampshire or nationally, and to tout what a good job that they did. And that our voting system is safe and secure, and that people should have faith in it. I believe during that, some of the folks that actually came were officials, election officials from Bedford, Laconia, and I can't remember if it was Wyndham or not. But they talked about all of the issues that they had there. They were all discovered, they were all resolved, and there was no discrepancy that rose to the level that it would have changed anything. So, everything was fine, and if there was an issue, they discovered it later on. One of the things, again, getting back to the statistically significant, is what I'd like to ask is, do you folks like hot dogs and hamburgers? How many people here like and eat hot dogs and hamburgers? Everybody, Andrew, you like them, right? Well, do you know that you're eating rat shit? There's rat shit in hamburgers. And what it is, is it's a statistically allowable amount by the health services regulation. So, if people are concerned about these statistically insignificant things, I hope that you are as concerned about the rat shit in your hot dogs and hamburgers, and that you stop eating those and put as much effort into making sure that nobody else does as well. So, that being said, also to talk back to Matt Mowers, who voted both here in North Carolina and New Hampshire, we found out about it, didn't we? So, again, huh?
New Jersey.
New Jersey. So, we found out about it. So, that just shows how safe this is. The next thing basically is to get to the point, I guess, of recommendations, is to stop this gaslighting. Having a commission to investigate something that doesn't exist is what's putting the idea into people's head that there is something to investigate. And that is unethical, and it is immoral. What we need to be looking at is the, all of the purging of voting rolls, removing machines from districts that have high ethnic minorities or percentages, and then moving polling places from places that are accessible to miles outside of town in old rundown abandoned malls and things. Those are all things that happen, and those are what we need to not do. So, what, the problem is that having this gaslighting campaign is part of the problem, and it is actually causing this. My grandfather did not suffer fools, and he would not want his money to be going towards something that is not only not doing anything, but actually hurting the very problem. And the only reason that I could see that they would be trying to push this is so that then they can now push laws that are going to disenfranchise poor and working people, because they're not voting the way certain people want them to vote. So, that is, that is my statement. Any questions?
Yes. Just to remind you, the reason that this special committee has been formed is to investigate and listen to people talk about why voter confidence in our election system has diminished over the years.
Right. And that is because of gaslighting like this, where we are basically telling people, "There's a problem. Come and tell us about it."
I think you interpret it differently than I. And we're trying to find ways to improve people's confidence. And I appreciate your testimony. Are there any questions from the committee?
James?
Yes, Jim?
Yes, I, I think you make a good point about the gaslighting. And our job is not to be a legislative committee. It's to take a look at that question, which is on the city, the state's website. You might want to look at it, the Secretary of State's website, as the charge that David Scanlon made for us, which is, to paraphrase the 23 words, and is very clear, that we are to look into the root causes for the lack of confidence in our voting in New Hampshire and offer suggestions. Perhaps you can take a look at that, Dave?
Well, from what you just said-
Three or four specific reasons-
That cause would be gaslighting such as this, and such as the senator from Portsmouth had pointed out several other issues.
I do understand that, David, but, but there is more to it. And we are in existence. And we have to come up with a response by October, November, October, at our final meeting. We're going to be having more meetings in the North Country, and in Laconia, and in Manchester. So, since we, what is, is, we are in existence. The gaslighting may continue, but could you offer some suggestions by writing to us in the next two or three months, as you continue to hear the discussion? I'm asking you if you could put your brain to that, because you seem to have some good ideas.
Fine, yes. But again, I hope that your first thing is that the reason for the concern around voter, the voter integrity is because there are certain entities and forces in this country that are gaslighting the people into believing this, so that then they can then manipulate the laws to disenfranchise people that don't vote the way they want to.
As I said, you made a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will hear from Ann Kopp from Nashua.
I come with props. I am a two-term state representative, first from Merrimack County, second from Rockingham County, and recently, like all my fellow legislators, am a former legislator. I come to you with props today. First of all, we'll start back in 2008. The Secretary of State's job, which is elections, is to follow up on people that are voting illegally in the state. All of these 360 items are from the 2008 election in New London. The New London moderator had to step down in disgrace for assaulting me, because I brought this to her attention. New London College, it was Colby Sawyer, students were allowed to register there, like as if he lived under the commission's desk, which is inappropriate. All of my mailings got returned. When I brought this to the Secretary of State's office, Matthew Maverick George, I had pictures of illegal people voting, they were actually letting students from the college vote who lived in Andover, New Hampshire. Roll forward to the Andover election. This is my candidate mailings that came back in Andover. All are supposed to be identified by the Secretary of State through a certified letter, and when they're found to be undeliverable, the AG's office and the deputy Dick Tracy and his staff are supposed to go investigate and find out why there is nobody at that address. Several said "undeliverable," several said "no mail receptacle," several of the spots were non-residents, where people could not live, like the campus of Colby Sawyer. Bring forward to the people's feeling that elections are not transparent, fair, and clean elections. Now, let me tell you, it's not a partisan issue, this is Democrat and Republican. Let me remind you that the Wyndham audit, which I helped with, had a Democrat ask for a recount, that if she did not do that, none of us would be talking about Wyndham today. Harry Hurstey, who's the auditor, against the citizens' wishes in Wyndham, they wanted Jovan Pulitzer, who is a professional auditor when it comes to elections, to come. The town council in Wyndham rolled over the people's well in Wyndham, and you know, 500 at least people I saw there come out and complain about them not being listened to. They chanted in the street, "We want Jovan, we want Jovan, we want Jovan." Now, that movie Kill Chain has Harry Hurstey proving that he can, how can I say, corrupt the machines with a little card. He also got paid by New Hampshire several hundred thousand dollars, it goes into that $5 million you guys talk about for an audit that we did not get, the citizens asked for Jovan Pulitzer, and I guarantee you, it would have been less than $5 million to do that. Let me roll forward to my last election, Derry, New Hampshire. The gentleman said that Derry was clean election, I beg to differ. I am a former state representative, 2020 election winner, from Derry, New Hampshire. While the Wyndham audit was going on, I knew voting numbers. There are 26,000 residents in Derry, New Hampshire, 18,000 registered to vote on November 2020, 1,836, which is a 10% turnout for elections that are, I'm trying to think of the word, mail-in voting, or is absentee voting, thank you, those folks. It is a bump of 10% in Derry alone. This audit went in conjunction with the Wyndham audit, but I didn't want to overshadow their results. Since when does Senate Bill 43 have to tell the Secretary of State and the AG's office how to do their job, number one, and number two, they're already getting paid by the citizenry, they draw a check of 40 hours a week and get paid to do election integrity, election visibility, election research? When I did the Derry audit, citizens like Robin Rousseau, Jim Kofelt, the Whites from Portsmouth, Lizneck, several people from Derry, helped with my little campaign. This is proof, this is documentation. These postcards were sent to the 1,836 people on that list that were absentee voters. Number five, Shenito Road in Derry, which the moderator and the town clerk Dan Hilli know, is condo development. The registrar said 5 Shenito Road was their address. They neglected to put apartment 301, apartment 5, apartment 25, no apartment numbers, a lot of these that got returned. These are postcards that I put together, a welcome wagon, state representative in their town, with my email address, asking them, "Any services you need, because you're a new voter and new resident in Derry, please reach out to me." At the post office, I asked for return receipt requested, which means these little postcards don't get thrown in the trash or they don't get delivered. As you can see on the back, they have all the yellow stamps. Anybody needs to see that? No receptacle, unknown address, no person of that name lives here, 1,836 of them. 260 came back. I had to go see my post office master general, because being a legislator in Derry, I lived on 46 Shenito Road, I requested these postcards be returned to me, which many of them were. The first three days, there was about 50 a day that came. On the third day, nothing. From 1,836, and you got 260 came back. My mail carrier took my mail, and an honorable representative receives mail from the post officer from the state, okay, is addressed, Honorable Ann Kopp. My mail carrier took it upon herself to mark out with a sharpie, "Honorable." From that day forward, I never got another card, they all got thrown away. I went to the postmaster general in Derry to complain. He said he would look into it. Now, as far as our Constitution is concerned, Section RSA 4:45, Section 2, Letter C, says that the legislature, which is a full and separate equal power to the legislature, the executive branch, and the judicial branch, all separate equal powers, that they were supposed to come to us to ask for a voter change in the rules, they never got legislative permission. The governor, under his executive orders, changed the voting laws for the state of New Hampshire, which I'm concerned they're going to keep that for this coming election in 2020, which, by the way, may I ask you respectfully, your data's not going to come to us until October? September is the primary. We have another election under our belt. Harry Hurstey got paid by the state of New Hampshire and erased the memory cards in Derry, in Wyndham. 22 months, that date is supposed to stay, so we still have it until September. We don't have that any longer. So the gentleman from Somersworth, who said there's no tangible proof, he's right in that regard, because they erased it. LHS, which is the Dominion Diebold Agency that runs our machines, were part of the audit. They also said things can't happen, they can't be on the internet. I asked my moderator in Derry, "Here's your motherboard, square eight and a half by 11 piece of paper, where on this sheet is the LAN cable? Where on this sheet, where part of the motherboard is the Wi-Fi?" She looked at me blankly. Now, I will tell you, our election officials and volunteers do not know IT. I've been an IT person with Raytheon for 20 years. We also have audits. Our state has not had a forensic audit, which 2020, if you're going to ask me for solutions, we need a forensic audit, and we need our auditor to be of the people, Jovan Pulitzer, and that's a reasonable request. The town of Wyndham went through the motions to get legislation passed, which was unnecessary. Senate Bill 43 was erected to be papulum, to smooth us over, they took the teeth out of their bill, and I'll tell you, I know this for a fact, I was a state representative in the hall with election law, Barbara Griffin chair, saying, "Oh, no, no, we don't need to do this or that." When I just cited to you in RSA 4:45, Section 2, Letter C, which states that the legislature has the right to overturn this executive order with these changes in our voting laws, those voting laws, if people have their druthers, are going to stay, so that in Derry, you're going to have 1,836 more people providing absentee ballots when they're healthy. We know that people are handicapped, elderly, can't get to the polls for reasonable reasons, that response is 2% to 3%, not 10%, which is reflective of the 2020 election. Now, I took it upon myself to get this data by myself. I didn't ask anybody's help from Wyndham, because they were already in the throes of doing canvassing and the voter information logs. I did this by myself, with some help financially from the folks who wanted to see the results. Our moderator and our town clerk in Derry were not receptive. When I went to get the picture of the machine tapes, they were not helpful. And since then, the, this is all factual proof, are saying this proof doesn't exist. This election, 2020, information, which is only, only absentee voter, we're not talking about the machine irregularities, or the fact that I had to stand outside during COVID because I didn't choose to wear a mask for over an hour when a blizzard blew up and the tent outside was separate segregated us, talk about disenfranchising a voter! I was freezing out there, we had a blizzard in Derry, ask the clerk, he's here today. Outrageous, but we hung in there because we had a belief in the Constitution that we have a right to choose to wear a mask, to not wear a mask, to come to vote, to not come to vote, and when you come to vote, you should be prepared with your license, ID, you can't even rent a video without a license. It's absurd that people say people can't vote, or people of color can't vote. I was in Derry, and I didn't see any problem with any race, color, creed, gender, anything, except the people that didn't want to wear a mask had to stand out in the cold, but we did it happily. Now, being a two-term state rep, I am very upset and very determined to make sure, and I was surprised not to find Secretary of State Scanlon here today, because I wanted to tell him that his office dropped the ball, and I can prove it, this is factual data. If you guys care to look into the voting records for the Secretary of State looking up these addresses that didn't get delivered, and his subsequent handoff to the AG's office and the AG deputies, which is supposed to physically, after they get a return registered letter, to go and find out physically why that mail was not delivered, why that vote was incorrect. All of these pieces of mail represent votes that are illegal, they're not appropriate. They're illegal because they were not addressed at the address they claimed they were at when they voted. 5 Shenito Road is known to be a condo development, and they didn't put the apartment number because they didn't live there. It's common sense, we want common sense solutions, you asked folks who came up here to give you solutions? No more machines, we're a state of 1.3 million people, each voting district has very small numbers, so they can easily count, the machines are, at best, questionable, they were brought here by the former governor's dad, LHS has been questionable in their handling of the ballots, of all of the memory cards, they allowed a federal violation, the records for the election in 2020, in Wyndham in particular, and we're just talking about a tiny slice of the entire state. 20 in Wyndham in particular, and we're just talking about a tiny slice of the entire state, was supposed to be saved for 22 months, which would bring us to September, they were wiped over the summer, 2021, gone. And Harry Hurstey is a proud recipient of our tax dollars, we paid him to do that to us. Thank you very much, not happy about that. So as far as election integrity, transparency, and our faith in elections, this is a small microcosm of one of your own state representatives telling you this happened, not only in Rockingham County, but in Merrimack County too, and basically the college of Colby Sawyer, which was my bane of existence, that was difficult. So thank you very much, appreciate you looking into this, and I do not believe in any way, shape, or form that you guys are gaslighting anyone. I find it encouraging that you've assembled yourselves to look at the issues that our citizenry, don't even look at the fact of a state rep, a former state rep, the citizenry are upset, please hear them, and thank you for your time today, and thank you for indulging me. Have a good day.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Yes, Jim?
Yes, if I can ask, as a, as a candidate and state representative, have you ever been involved in, in the recount process?
Absolutely.
And what is your observation about that? Were you satisfied, were the counts similar to what were received by the machine count?
I actually volunteered for my Democrat counterpart in New London, and at that time, I was physically removed, the moderator assaulted me, I told the police officer, Chief Strand at the time, that she assaulted me, I had to file a police report, which is on record, and Jesse Levine, the town moderator, the town manager actually, of New London, had caught in Cleveland, the moderator stepped down in disgrace for assaulting a candidate. Now, how I found out about this illegal voting? When you're a candidate, you have to go in the ladies' room and hide your lapel, you can't have any electioneering on you. I came out of the ladies' room and identified a gentleman who lived in Andover, voting in New London. I said, "Excuse me," I went like this, "Chandler," and she jumped me physically and tried to drag me out of the polls, calling me electioneering when I was the candidate. That evening, she locked the door, and I couldn't come in and watch the count. As a candidate in New London, it's a disgrace. I brought this, all of this information, the pictures I had, to Matthew Maverick George, who's the deputy of the AG's office, and he did not investigate. I handed him this pile, "Here you go." He's like, "Oh, no, I don't need that, you take that back." I said, "Oh, no, I insist, they're your copies." He said, "We don't need that, we'll get, get back to it in about 30 days." He sent me a letter 30 days later, no voter fraud, no problem, no irregularities, no, nothing. And then the other thing is, if you look at the Secretary of State's website, you will see, only five cases were brought up to the level of being put on the Secretary of State's website. None of them reflect mine, any election, and said, "Oh, the person was living at home temporarily and they moved out, no fraud here." Boom, next one, only five out of the entire state? Come on, would that make someone have confidence in our elections? Hell, no. So thank you for your question.
Actually, I was asking about the recount process, which is held in Concord...
Yes.
...at the Archives Building or the State House.
Yes.
Have you ever been involved in that process?
It was that election that I went and helped the Democrat count, absolutely.
And you were thrown out during that recount process?
No, no, that was at the moderator's office at the election in New London.
So you did go to the State House or Archives to participate in the recount?
Yes.
Were you satisfied with that process?
No, because actually, this is a funny story, my counterpart went and helped the other guy count. When I showed up, I said, "Oh, thank you for coming to help with the recount," and he said, "I'm not over here," and he went over to the other side of the table. But normally, I did want to say that this commission has to understand, anyone with voter concern, it's a nonpartisan issue. The person who came forward in Wyndham was a Democrat. Several Republicans have had issues with their elections. It is not a partisan issue, and it's certainly not something we levy upon our election officials and volunteers, because they do yeoman's work, for sure. I wouldn't want to do it.
Now, I would be very grateful if, if you just sent me, or sent the Secretary of State's office a simple list of the solutions that you've very quickly...
Absolutely.
...gone over this afternoon. My notes show you talked about audits, no more machines, transparency, and I...
A statewide forensic audit with Jovan Pulitzer is my bottom line.
I understand, you'll provide the details, I'm taking notes very quickly...
Thank you.
...when you're speaking very quickly, so I'm trying to just catch it.
I've got limited time.
But, and also, I kind of got the sense that, that you need an ombudsman who you can take your complaints to, who you think is going to not only listen to you, but also have any authority to, to act.
Not really, because the Secretary of State is a bona fide election law entity. We pay them, the taxpayers already pay them, we don't want an abundance. Then you go to the AG's office, who's in charge of election fraud or any election irregularities for them to investigate. They also get paid by the taxpayers. We want them to do their job, Matthew Maverick George was supposed to do his job, and he did not, and I can factually prove that, so I'm not speaking out of turn.
So just, just put that down as, as one of the points, and I thank you very much for your testimony.
Problem.
Yes, Andy?
Just one comment, you made mention that you were not allowed in the polls at the end for the tape, and this has been something that has been brought up to me, and actually personally have experienced that in Concord. Luckily, my, I have my city clerk on speed dial, and she quickly called the moderator and said, "You are wrong, you may let them in." So some, one goal, my personal goal of this committee is to have a explanation sheet for moderators, explaining that, yes, at 6:59, oh, Concord, 6:59, you can let the candidate in to watch the tape, because the first thing people think of is, at 7 o'clock, the doors close, you can't go in, they run the tape, and you're not there. You question. You've been out there all day long, 12 hours, and you say, "Why can't I watch?" So having that transparency is one of the main goals, is that people don't feel that that all is for naught.
And it's not even the candidate only, it's the candidates, volunteers, people that help, that go to the place with you to help watch.
That are in a respectable place in there.
Yes.
When the, again, having a location in that polling, when the tape is ran, that you can be in there appropriately.
And also be able to request the tapes without getting arrested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, our next testimony will come from Sue Polidura from Portsmouth.
Hi, my name is Sue Polidura, and I wish the Reverend was still here, she left. She said to have minority inclusion, and so, I was born and raised in Puerto Rico. I joined the military, I came here to serve in the military, I was serving at Peace Air Base. After I got out, I stayed here, I've been a long time resident of Portsmouth. I do a lot of the local history, I got involved in politics, they seem to go hand in hand. My first, my first exposure to election was in, I think it was either 2008 or 2010 election, and I was doing several duties, one of them was to watch over the same registration table. And first thing I saw... And first thing I saw was this young woman. She put in, and she brought in as proof of residence that she lived there, a letter on the table that said, and was addressed to resident. It wasn't addressed to her. And I was like, "Wait a minute. That letter is addressed to resident. It's not addressed to her." The person in charge of registration agreed, and says, "Well, this is not acceptable. You have something else." And she proceeded to put out a driver's license, I don't think it was a New Hampshire driver's license, and said, "Well, you can still vote. We'll give you an affidavit." So she proceeded to fill out the affidavit. "Yes, I live here, blah, blah, blah," and signed it, and she was given a ballot. Another person came in. He was staying at a motel. He was a vagrant. And he had been staying in there just to be, just to be there so he wouldn't be homeless. The person didn't speak hardly any English. Again, no ID, no nothing. He was given an affidavit. He proceeded to vote. After that election, I said, "You know, this is not right. This is not right. I'm coming from Puerto Rico. You want to, if you think that the elections in the United States are, you know, are hard, you should go through an election in Puerto Rico. You get people, you know, that families, women, couples divorcing, and this is when I was growing up. I assume it's probably more than that now." And I'm thinking, "Why? What's going on?" And I started kind of looking into the issue, the problem, and come to find out that there were a lot more in that year, a lot of people registered the same day. I was unemployed at the time, and I said, "I'm going to just pick 100 people of those that registered the same day." Those are the times when you could send, you could get the date of registration right there on your voter registration list. And I sent 100 cards, because, like I said, I wasn't unemployed. That's all I could afford. I have about 10% of those back. And following up on my research, I said, "Let me go to all of these places." I went to one place, it was a vacant house. I went to another place, it was a commercial building. I went to another place, it was another commercial building. And I started thinking, "There is just something not right." Fast forward. The problem, as I see it, is our election, is our election law, is the fact that we had never corrected who can vote in New Hampshire and do it lawfully. Someone that comes in from Mars, let's say, can land in New Hampshire on Election Day and go to their local office and say, "Hey, I just landed here, but I intend to stay here because it's such a nice place. I have my registration from Mars Motor Vehicle Department. Go ahead, and that's my picture, or three heads." So, and they will give him an affidavit, and he will proceed to get to vote, thus canceling my vote. As a veteran, someone who served for many years, that person, the following day, will decide that they're going back to Mars. And they just voted that day. Is that easy? Why is it that easy, that lawful residents, taxpayers of New Hampshire, get, other citizens get prioritized over them? The town of Durham, 5,000 people in the same day in a small town like that? Really? How many of them are true residents that actually had a license issued to them? I heard the first time that SB3 wasn't effective, required that you show your ID, and letters were sent to the people that, whose license were not, did not get a New Hampshire license. From the Secretary of State, they send them letters reminding them to get a New Hampshire license. To my understanding, about 20,000 letters came back on deliverable. They were sent to the Attorney General's Office. They did nothing with them because they did not have the budget to do so. You want to fix the election integrity in New Hampshire? That's how you do it. Someone that is not lawful in the state and doesn't have a license or have been registered, nor do they have an intention to do so, should not overrule a resident, a lawful person who's paying their taxes, who is involved in their community, just because they happen to be at one location one particular day. When you're in the military, you get an absentee ballot. You vote anywhere in the world. You get an absentee ballot, you send it to your town where you are registered. You can't vote in the elections in Germany, even though you are stationed there. You can't vote on the elections in Italy. You have to vote where you are registered. And so it should be, for any student that is not lawfully registered in the state of New Hampshire, they have to vote on the state where they are registered. And I'm pretty much, I'm very, it's been many years now, and I have to tell you, I'm very frustrated, because I see so many people say that we don't have a problem. We do have a problem. It's just that you don't want to see it. You don't want to see it, because it's probably benefiting you in one way or another. I think that it's time to do something. I go back, the history of this time is 400 years, and I go back to the beginning, where the people, the first constitution of the state of New Hampshire, which was January 1776, six months before the Declaration of Independence. I got into the mindset of those people. Those people wanted their right, they wanted to have their recognition as being property owners, having the right, because they supported their local government. They did not vote to have people that are from God knows where to come and vote, and overrule their will. The town of Durham, many of the students are overruling what the real citizens want, the actual citizens want. They didn't, they didn't set up the, they didn't fund this country for that to happen. So I don't fault anybody except the legislature for being so weak as to not pass laws that will stop being, stop the New Hampshire voting procedures to be as porous, as unaccountable as it is. I fault them. If they change that, 90% of the problems will go away. Someone that doesn't, that doesn't have an ID, that doesn't live anywhere, that's telling me that today, they just moved in today? Fine. This is a provisional ballot. You can vote, but we're not counting your vote today. And you will see a lot of the shenanigans that are happening with people going from ward to ward and places to places, registering themselves to vote just because they can. So with that, I will wrap up. If you have any questions, please.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Sue. And I'll ask the committee, yes, Doug?
I have a question. About, thank you for your testimony, about the provisional ballot. We haven't had that in New Hampshire, as you know. My question is, you know, we, one thing we've always prided ourselves in New Hampshire is we get the results that night. And as, you know, think back to 2020, when some of the states were counting ballots for days. And I worry, or I'm interested in your perspective, if we had provisional ballots, I think that would, that could slow the ballot counts and maybe create additional problems or additional perceptions. I'd be interested in your perspective on that.
I am not representing the slowing down of the ballots, but what is the use of having an account that night if it is not accurate? Our motto is "Live Free or Die." I know where it came from. I know who said it. Well, the thing is that we're not living free, and we're dying. People are losing confidence in the process. I know many people that say, "Well, my vote doesn't count anymore." Really? In the "Live Free or Die" state, they say in that. So what is the use of having immediate voting if it isn't accurate? There are too many details that go along with this. This is why, you know, you have been appointed to come out with options. But as to me, the number one, I go for foundational things. What is the one thing that affects everything else? And that is be able to have those people who should vote in New Hampshire, vote in New Hampshire, one voter, one vote, where you live. Fix that, and you have fixed 90% of anything else.
Thank you. Any other? Seeing none, thank you very much for your testimony. We will next hear from Louise Spencer from Concord.
I spoke to Louise.
I'm sorry?
I spoke to Louise.
You did, okay. So we'll hold. How about Kelsey Clementowicz?
She's just outside. I'll grab her.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Is it possible still to sign up?
Yes. Would you like to put your name on here, Peter?
Do you know?
Yes, I, you know, I've been sweating very well.
You said that on the record, too. Geez.
Hello there. My name is Kelsey Clementowicz. Should I start, or are we gonna, are we waiting?
No, you may begin. Just make sure that you speak clearly into the microphone.
Perfect. My name is Kelsey Clementowicz. I live down the street in Portsmouth. I've been an attorney in New Hampshire for over a decade. I was a public defender for many years in Nashua, working across the table from our formidable Attorney General's Office and other law enforcement agents. And for the past few years, I've been focusing on election law in New Hampshire. As a Portsmouth voter, I have to say that Clerk Barnaby does run a fantastic election. But I've also seen that our clerks and election officials across the state have run impeccable elections through my work as a poll observer since 2014, and I was the Voter Protection Director for the Democratic Coordinated Campaign in 2020. And so I oversaw the voter education campaigns, as well as our poll observers. First, I just want to say that our elections are safe and secure, and confidence in our elections means people's ability to participate and to have their voices heard. And I would echo a number of Sandra Perkins Cuoco's remarks, so I won't go back into it, but I think that New Hampshire law does an excellent job to run our elections, and our local elections officials do as well. I apologize for my baby. But I think that part of this commission's duty is to address some of the misinformation and just incorrect information that has come before this committee here and in other places. And so I wanted to focus my testimony on a couple of those issues. First, the idea that memory cards are hacked or hackable. As was already mentioned, our laws prevent our ballot counting machines from being connected to the internet. Therefore, they cannot be hacked. As I'm sure Cotter Cook well knows, there are a number of laws in place for the testing and checking of those ballot machines. RSA 65642 lays out that all of the ballot counting machines must be tested, and of course, it's a felony to tamper with any of them. I don't know if many of you have read the Election Procedure Manual. Unfortunately, I've read it cover to cover, but page 316 lays out instructions for ballot Next, I just want to talk about what is done at the polling place in order to reconcile those counts. So, you know, there are some allegations that the machines do not reflect the actual number of people who came in. So at the end of the day, when the officials are reconciling it, they will total the number of actual people who came in. They'll check the checklist to see how many people came in. They will count the number of ballots that were used. And they will also count the totals from the machine for the total numbers there. Those are then listed on their post-election checklist, which are then made part of the public record, and they're forwarded to the Attorney General's Office and the Secretary of State's office. So if there are any discrepancies in those numbers that are deemed significant, they will be obviously investigated. In addition, the RSA lays out that, actually, sorry, this is the Election Procedure Manual, indicates that if there are any discrepancies that are not able to be resolved at the local level, that the polling place officials shall disclose those to the public for public information, as well as to allow any of the candidates to then request a recount. As was alluded to, we also have a recount process that goes through and hand counts every single ballot to make sure that there are no significant discrepancies between the hand count and the ballot machine. Now, I'll say significant, because for those of you who have seen a recount, it is many, many, many hours of people, often volunteers, sitting there and counting by hand ballot after ballot after ballot. It's incredibly intensive process, and again, speaks to the dedication of our election officials and the volunteers who do that. And so New Hampshire's been doing recounts for a long time in this fashion, and until the Wyndham issue, no significant discrepancies were observed. Talk about Wyndham in just a second. Another issue that somebody mentioned was that some machines would have counts that don't represent the way that the entire town or ward voted. And I want to talk about that a little bit, especially with 2020. As we all know, in 2020, we saw a massive increase in the use of absentee ballots as we dealt with the COVID pandemic. So often, you had moderators who were tasked with counting on Election Day, maybe a third of their votes coming in by absentee ballot. And so to process those, that means they need to open the envelopes and then feed them through the machines while voting is going on, because no ballots are passed through those machines until Election Day. And so in many polling places, we saw that moderators found it to be most efficient to feed all of the absentee ballots into one or two dedicated machines. Therefore, and this was noted, I believe, in the Wyndham Audit Report, you would see, say, one or two machines that could be used for absentee ballots skew potentially more Democratic, or maybe in other communities, more Republican, but they were not necessarily in line with that of the whole, the whole town or ward, because, you know, different voters are absentee voters, whether it's in nursing homes or young people who are more nervous about, or older people who are more nervous about the pandemic. Okay, so let's talk about the Wyndham Audit just for a moment, just to make sure that everyone is on the same page with this. I know the committee is. But in the Wyndham Audit, the culprit of this was that there were so many absentee ballots for Wyndham this year, as opposed to in previous years, that the, I believe it was the Clerk's Office, used a folding machine in order to fold all of those ballots that were mailed out to the voters. That folding machine folded them in just about the same place on every absentee ballot. And so when that older machine counted it, any dot that was on the fold would, then the machine took that as a vote. And so if, for example, I voted for four Republican candidates, and there was a line through the Democratic candidate, that fold line, that would be an overcount, which means that none of those counts would count. And so on a recount, that's what they identified as the biggest culprit. There was no hacking, there was no conspiracy. This was an older voting counting machine and consistent folds in the ballots. But recounts, as we've seen, serve as an audit, and so we're able to figure out what happened and make sure that changes are made next time. And so there were a number of recommendations. I'm sure everyone is familiar with the report, but none of them have to do with security Let's talk about the letters that go to various voters. So our law indicates that any voter who is registering for the first time, who lacks a voter ID, would have to sign a qualified voter affidavit. Then what happens is that they're marked in election net in the system as somebody who voted with a qualified voter affidavit. Those names are all submitted to the Secretary of State's office. The Secretary of State's office then- The Secretary of State's office, then, under the statute, is required to cause a letter of identity verification to be mailed to each and every voter who wasn't able to confirm their identity with a photo ID at the polling place, who's registering for the first time. The statute then lays out that if those letters are returned, so if that mail was undeliverable from the Secretary of State's office, and they also have an agreement with the, or not an agreement, but instructions to the post office to return as undeliverable anybody whose name is not associated with that. So they've sort of overcorrected. But so anybody whose letter was returned, they then investigate. So in the first instance, the Secretary of State's office investigates by investigating the public records, as well as they'll send folks to go door to door and talk to the other people who are registered at that address. If the Secretary of State is not satisfied with all of that information, that that person is in fact a valid voter, then that information is sent to the Attorney General's Office. And as I mentioned, as a public defender, I had the opportunity to work with the Attorney General's Office. And I will tell you that they are extremely thorough. They have a full-time investigator on the elections unit by the name of Dick Tracy, who's been doing this for years and years, as well as additional resources in the form of state police to make sure that any voters who might appear suspicious through this method or through others are duly investigated. And, you know, there's a reason that we have law enforcement doing this, going door to door, and agents of the Secretary of State's office. And it's, you know, for those of us who live in New Hampshire, especially in, well, in Portsmouth, I think my door was hit maybe about 15 times in the last election. But I know some New Hampshire voters are very hesitant to answer the door or to disclose personal information to private parties. And so that's why we task our law enforcement agencies with confirming voters. And so for folks who are, you know, worried that there may not be a valid voter, I'm sure they have forwarded that information to the Attorney General's Office in order for a real investigation to take place. And, you know, in general, any ideas of fraud, that's the place for these. The Attorney General's Office are the folks who are qualified, resourced, and, you know, have the responsibility of addressing these issues. And so anyone who has concerns should certainly send those to the Attorney General's Office if they have not already. I believe this was submitted in the last hearing for House Bill 218. But let me make sure I have it correct. It's my understanding that
Well, you're looking that up, Kelsey.
Yes.
We would be very interested in hearing out how you propose we help build voter confidence.
Great.
You're giving us great background. We've heard it from other sources as well. But I would really like you to focus on the solutions that you have in your presentation to share with us.
Fantastic. Will do. And I think part of the solutions is communicating all of this information to the public.
That's number one.
Absolutely. And so the Attorney General's Office has looked into all of this. In 2020, they, there was a public records request that indicated that they had closed all but five wrongful voting investigations with no cases that were opened for prosecution. This is dated April 8, 2022, from Deputy Attorney General Miles Madison. This office does not have, wait, sorry, this office does not have any criminal or civil proceedings pending in relation to alleged wrongful voting stemming from the September 8 or November 3, 2020 elections at this time. There was one additional thing I wanted to note regarding the citizen audit. And that is the Zillow investigation that was done. And just, I just want to bring us back to what the law on domicile is. So you are domiciled in the place where you have established both a physical presence, so I've been there, and it's the center of my civic life. And so obviously, if I had grown up in a home in Portsmouth and this was the center of my civic life, this, I would be domiciled here. Say I go to college, I went to Brown, and, but I, you know, Rhode Island wasn't my civic home, New Hampshire was, because I stayed involved. I would maintain my voting domicile in New Hampshire. That would be appropriate and in fact required by law. Even if my parents had sold their house and moved, you know, maybe to the North Country, if I had not established my physical presence there, my parents' house, even though sold, would remain my correct voting domicile. In addition, someone who perhaps was homeless might use a physical address for their domicile because that's where they had most recently slept the night before the election. So if, you know, my family and I were sleeping in a car, I would provide the address as the physical address where I had been staying as my domicile. And so even if citizen investigations might come back that, you know, this particular address is an associate, it doesn't mean that someone voted wrongfully. And again, any concerns should be sent to the Attorney General's Office for them to investigate. So to address the chair's question, I would echo that I think ERIC is an excellent system to assuage any concerns. I also would just love to see some of the confusing language in the statutes to be cleaned up so that voters in the public can more easily understand everything that goes on. Our systems could use some modernization. You know, if we had same-day, sorry, if we had online voter registration, a portal where voters can check their information, that might assist with voter confidence because people are able to see it, you know, see all of the information go in and ensure that their vote was counted. But in general, I think New Hampshire does a really, really excellent job. And most of the problem has been language and frankly, conspiracy theories that are coming from the rest of the country and not based on any experience we have in New Hampshire. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
Yes. This isn't facetious. You want a job? It was very good and very helpful. My prejudice, and I'll say it right up front, is that same-day registration solves a huge amount of trouble problems in New Hampshire. Can you think of aspects of same-day registration that causes problems?
As a policy, I think that same-day registration is one of the things that makes New Hampshire's elections great. It helps with our first-in-the-nation primary and it ensures a higher participation rate than I think many other states have. It is, you know, the system, what I'm thinking about, just to share my thoughts out loud, is I'm thinking about the challenges on our local elections officials. And I think that alleviating some of that work for them on the front end would be very helpful. And so one of the reasons that I would advocate for online or automatic voter registration is to allow for, say, somebody's documents to be submitted to the system earlier and to be able to take some of that pressure off of our elections officials. Do I think that that should replace same-day voter registration? Absolutely not. But I think that that could be something that could minimize some of the burden on our local election officials. And in fact, it might help assuage some of the concerns that others have in the sense that they're registering earlier and therefore, if anyone is worried about their registration, there's time before the election for officials to, you know, ensure that that person is duly appropriate to be registered. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
How do you keep people from thinking that an online registration could be easily hacked? Because that's part of the, sort of the nomenclature out there.
Sure. Well, we haven't seen it, for one thing, in other states which have online and automatic voter registration. These systems are incredibly secure. I mean, the Attorney General's Office has made, oh, sorry, the Attorney General's Office, as well as the Secretary of State's Office, has been concerned about ballot security for years and years and has always been the focus of the state. Before this year's election, there were a number of training opportunities run by, you know, the FBI, the other national security agencies to ensure that each of the states has the ability to maintain those secure systems. And actually, one of the, one of the system's providers, I believe, is Election Net, which is currently used by our clerks and supervisors and moderators to register folks. I believe that Election Net also does an online registration system. And since New Hampshire has seen plenty of security in the backend of it for clerks and supervisors, I think that that could certainly be one of the vendors that we could comfortably look at as we've seen their technology be safe and secure in New Hampshire as well as other places.
I go back politically many, many decades. So I'm thinking about one truism that was apparent back then. I think it's true today, and that is that in politics, perception is reality. And that's what we're grappling with here, that there are many perceptions and therefore many realities that ultimately we're trying to reconcile. And certainly appreciate your contribution in helping to clarify and identify that reconciliation. But these are the challenges that we face as a committee. Any other, yes, Doug?
Yeah, no, I appreciate, appreciate your testimony and your familiarity with the Election Procedure Manual as someone who helped write it. You showed your, you showed your, you proved that today. And I, you mentioned conspiracy theories. You know, we saw a lot of people here, they're bringing in various pieces of information. I mean, you know, there's just, there's a lack of trust out there. It goes way beyond just elections. It's much deeper than that, which I reflected in that article in the New Hampshire Business Review that I passed around. I just wonder if you have any suggestions on how, I mean, I think more transparency, more education is all good. But I just wonder if you have any other thoughts for the commission on how to? I mean, we're here to get people more confidence. And a lot of people don't have confidence. They just don't trust. They don't trust their neighbor. And I mean, it's a deeper problem. I wonder if you have any other thoughts on that?
This commission has a very, very challenging job. I think that you will always find people, if you look for them, who do not trust something. I can say, as a decade, as a criminal defense lawyer, I had many clients who did not believe that the state had the authority to put them in jail because it was unconstitutional. And I worked with many clients who had many conspiracy theories. I think one of the challenges is that by giving voice and platform to those, to every different idea, in some ways, you know, you're not doing this, but I think it falsely elevates these narratives as to what's happening here. Because, you know, even if we have, say, 30% of the people who might testify at these things or hire, you know, might believe one particular thing, but 99.9% of the public does not believe that. But they're also not the people who are going to show up here today because they have other things on their minds. And so, you know, with this platform, it's quite a challenge. The only thing that I can suggest, and it's the reason I'm up here today, is that when we hear things that are stated as fact that lead to a conclusion that is not correct, that we can immediately rebut these facts for what they are so that we don't undermine confidence of anyone watching this or otherwise here. So I'm sorry, I don't think that helps very much. But it's just, it's to minimize the platform that we're giving some of these out-there theories.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation comes from Peter Somsich of Portsmouth.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of this commission. My name is Peter Somsich. I'm one of the state representatives in Portsmouth, representing Ward Three in Portsmouth. And I echo the previous speaker's comments about how challenging a job you have. And I have to say, for disclosure purposes, that I am a little biased about the fact that when people say, "A lot of people have concerns", I don't think it's really a lot of people at all. There are some concerns and they might be legitimate, some are not. But I don't think that there are a lot of them. I, as somebody who was a, who came with my family as an immigrant to this country, from a country I couldn't vote for, couldn't vote in, nor my parents, I very much appreciate and value the sacred right to cast my vote and to be assured that my vote will be fairly counted. And I have, and I can participate in the activities of this new nation where I came to as, and now am a citizen of. The, one of the amazing things to me about election charges of bad elections, particularly from the 2020 election, is most of the people making these claims that the election was not fair and not accurate happen to be Republicans. And none of them say that their Republican elected office holders should step down because that was an illegitimate election. So I would be glad if they did that, especially since I'm in the minority in the State House right now. But that doesn't happen, right? And I'm a little concerned about the discussion around the 2020 election and some of the discussions we heard just today here, how very much aggressive, hostile, and almost threatening it is that just because you don't believe the way I believe, I've had the right somehow to use all kinds of means to force you to my opinion. That's a very undemocratic, dictatorial, and un-American idea, and certainly not patriotic. Neither was the act of those 13 representatives in the House who supported a bill to secede from the Union, totally unconstitutional, against their oath of office, and nonetheless, they thought they were patriots. So let me just say also that my understa, and I've been a resident of Portsmouth for over 20 years, 21 years. Previously, I resided in Amherst, where I knew Congressman Swett, who was our congressman at the time. And I'd been working as a poll worker, both in Amherst, a Republican town at the time, and now in Portsmouth, a Democratic town. And I can say from my experience here in Portsmouth that the elections here at all the wards that I'm familiar with are very fair and very accurate. And these workers take their responsibilities very seriously. And I believe very confidently that they do a very accurate job as much as possible to get it right. Now, the 2020 election, if you recall, we made all kinds of concessions regarding the pandemic situation, including easily accessible absentee voters, voter ballots, and registrations and tracking your ballot. If you register, I voted absentee just to be able to see if the tracking system works. And it tracked the request for a ballot and the ballot, it tracked it perfectly accurately. It was a great thing to do. It should be continued in the future. And it's one of the recommendations I'll follow up at the end of my comments. But we did a lot of things innovatively. And Secretary Gardner at the time, who had always championed the fact that the high turnout rate is what he's going for. If you recall, the 2020 election, I believe, was the highest on record for New Hampshire. We had the highest turnout ever. So to say that somehow that particular election with the highest turnout, with the most participation is somehow the unfair and inaccurate without proof, without, even though there have been challenges and none of them have panned out, at least for New Hampshire, and that's what you're investigating here, at least for New Hampshire, I don't see a problem there. But there are problems that should be addressed, and I'll get to that in a second here. And for one thing, I'm a scientist by profession, and I always believe in proof and I want to be able to double-check everything. So just as a comment about the voting machines, as was mentioned, these voting machines, at least here in New Hampshire and certainly not in Portsmouth, are not connected to the internet in any way. They're used for counting purposes. And what's more, we have a paper ballot that we can hand count if there's a problem. And I did many of those hand counts in Amherst that didn't have counting machines. But we have that proof. We're not one of those states that just does- We’re not one of those states that just does electronic voting, and then basically you press a button, and you’ve got to trust that your vote was properly counted. No, we have—and some machines did this, and I think it’s outrageous that any state would allow a machine that doesn’t have a tracking mechanism or paper recount provision. That just does not work for me. So we don’t do that here in this state. And I think if you took a poll of New Hampshire voters to say, “Who in New Hampshire wants to get rid of the tabulation machines that we have?” I think overwhelmingly, people would say, “No, we want to keep those machines. We don’t want to connect them to the Internet, but we do want to keep the tallying part of it.” So just to follow up on some recommendations that I have—I’ve lived in another state before, I lived in New Hampshire, and I also lived in a different country, in Germany, for many years. And now I’ve got to admit that when I came back to the United States again, into New Hampshire, I was a bit shocked at the kind of easygoingness with which we handle documenting your identity or voting, or, you know, utility bills and stuff. No other country lets you do that kind of stuff, because every other country in the world has an official ID paper that you have to have with you. And if I could wave a wand and say, “What would be the best way to deal with this?” I would say, “Every American citizen should get a passport. It’s the ultimate ID. Nobody can challenge it anywhere you go. You don’t need a student ID, you don’t need a utility bill. A passport to every American citizen, that’s the ultimate thing.” Now, that’s not something you can do, but it seems to me that would be something worth doing. Now, as far as how we can get more confidence in the elections, here are some recommendations that I came up with, some better than others. I believe one of the bills we had this session, in fact, and previously, is for an independent redistricting commission. So people have maybe a lack of confidence because the politicians have a chance to do too much gerrymandering, too much manipulating of the districts and so forth. Let’s have an independent redistricting commission. I know it’s been said that that’s against the Constitution, but if the legislature agrees that they’re going to have this commission do the work, and that they’re going to vote on that recommendation, it’s not unconstitutional then. So that would be a big step in making people feel that there’s confidence in the elections, and the politicians are not the ones drawing the lines. No excuse voting. I think there’s no reason why people shouldn’t be able to ask for an absentee ballot without any excuse, like we did during the pandemic. Just say, “I feel more confident, I want to vote absentee, send me an absentee ballot.” And just like they did with the tracking, which they’ve proven they can do, this is a pretty secure way of doing it. I believe, too, that better processing of identification is definitely needed. Originally, I’d not been a big proponent of, you know, what kind of IDs people should provide. I don’t like the affidavit idea in principle, because, like many criticisms we’ve heard before, it’s kind of saying, “Okay, if you don’t have anything, just sign here that you’re swearing that you’re doing the right thing, and it’s all accurate.” And then the Secretary of State has to follow up on it, and I’ve heard stories, too, where they haven’t followed up on it, where it just falls through the cracks somewhere. I think having a more clear guideline as far as what has to be presented, it would be better than having the affidavit system. I don’t know what the best way of doing that is, but I think it’s worth looking at, because there are a lot of problems with that. As I mentioned, most countries in the world would never let people vote the way we do here in New Hampshire. And of course, you might also know that the reason we don’t—we’re not required to do the motor voter registration in this state is because we have same-day registration. So if we do away with same-day registration, we have to do motor voter registration, which may be more accurate than the current system, I don’t know. Some other recommendations here, for example, I’d suggest that the individual town clerks have a regular, maybe right before elections, have a couple of open houses to the public, where they will offer an opportunity for people to come and listen to how the process works, what happens at the polls. The whole process that was described to us just previous—to me—would be laid out to anyone who’s concerned about the polling process being too nebulous, and they would like to make sure that they know how it works. I think some kind of an open house to do that would be very helpful. And I do agree that the Secretary of State’s office has some catching up to do as well. Secretary Gardner was in place for a long time. Unfortunately, that meant that a lot of things never got modernized, that he never wanted to get beyond a certain limit of what he was comfortable with. I think that was unfortunate, there should have been a lot more modernization in his office before this all happened. And most of us know that David Scanlon was actually running the office, and it wasn’t Gardner anymore, anyway. But nonetheless, I think that office needs to be modernized, and one of the things they could do—they could do when they modernize is look at some of these recommendations, how we can use new technologies to make things more streamlined and easy for people to vote. Not restrict the vote, but making it more clear who can vote, and how do you do that with voting. So, let’s see, I think—I think I went through all my—so, yeah, that’s pretty much all I have to say, and I thank you for your indulgence, and if you have any questions.
We thank you for your testimony, Peter. It’s nice to see you after all these years. Jim, please.
Peter, great, and great to see you, and thank you for your comments. Quickly, we need your help. We need your help as a group. We’re at our halfway point. We’ve already had four meetings, we’ve got another one scheduled in the North Country soon, and then Laconia, Manchester, again at the Archives, probably maybe one or two more. We’ve had a couple of speakers today, very powerful comments, including the previous speaker from you, who pointed out that by gaslighting, in other words, by giving some credence to some of the comments that some people make, and giving them kind of equal footing, that we are creating a problem and not getting down to the solution. The task, 23 words given to us by the Secretary of State, to paraphrase, it’s on the state’s website, is essentially to look at the root causes for lack of voter confidence. And the good chair tried to get us on that topic a number of times. What do you suggest, either now, or if you can send us some comments, because you’re very talented and focused in groups, what do you suggest we do to make sure that we get there from here, rather than to give another 25 hours to Wyndham discussion and other kind of discussion that really gets us nowhere?
Well, I think one of the—and I got to say, I pretty much agree with some previous speakers who are saying, “If we elevate these ideas too much, without challenging the proof for it, I think we are giving them a platform that is way beyond what they should have.” I’m sure that somewhere out there, there are people who still believe the Earth is flat. So just because some people believe it, I don’t think there should be a commission to look at whether or not we can give them that confidence to know that it’s round. But I think some of the allegations are—should be disproven by our state officials. The Secretary of State, for example, the Attorney General should be more aggressive when something like this comes up. They should address it head-on, either through a press release, or some—or a press conference or something to say. And I think Secretary Gardner did that when it was first challenged, that the elections in New Hampshire were not fair. He said, “Yes, they were, and there were no buses being brought in from Massachusetts.” He did say that. But I think they’re not—they haven’t been aggressive enough in addressing each one of these issues. Even with the Wyndham election things, that’s still out there, people are still percolating about—and I’m not sure if this is the same Pulitzer that the lady before was mentioning. I believe that guy has been charged with fraud on various fronts in business community, and is not a reliable person to be hired to audit. So even there, did the Secretary of State or any state officials come out and say, “We don’t think this person is qualified, that’s why we’re taking this person?” I mean, I didn’t hear it in the public domain, but I think we should not let those kind of things simmer too long, before at least somebody has to show some proof that there’s something behind it, and if there is, it should be investigated. And if there’s no proof, or it’s flimsy, then officials should say so. I mean, that’s what they’re being paid for. But I think that they’d be false for every single rumor that comes out there about hacked machines and things like that, to be elevated to a discussion. I mean, you guys could have a commission for each one of these conspiracies, because there’s always somebody that thinks that way.
We appreciate your contribution, and certainly will take it under advisement when we get to our report writing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
We are down to what I think is our official last public presentation by someone who has not presented previously. I have three names of people who are on my list who have spoken previously. If we have time, we’ll get to you, but we’d like to hear from Michael Bean of Rye at this point.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. It’s Michael Bean from Ryan, New Hampshire, and I’m here representing myself. And I had not planned on speaking today, I came to listen, but I’m compelled to speak now. I am diametrically opposed to referring to what’s going on here as gaslighting. I don’t find it to be gaslighting at all, and I believe the numbers that don’t trust our elections are much, much greater than people tend to believe. I want to give a couple of personal experiences for you first. One, in the town of Rye, I—well, first and foremost, I went to the Attorney General’s office, and I did speak to Investigator Tracy and also Miles Mattson. And we asked about—specifically about LHS associates, and who does the oversight on LHS associates. And we were told very specifically that those contracts with LHS associates rests specifically with each town, and that the town is directly responsible for the oversight and for the contract with LHS. The Secretary of State and the Attorney General’s office have nothing to do with it. So that led me to my town moderator. My town moderator, in discussion, acknowledged that—well, I actually asked him, “Who in the town is doing the oversight of LHS and the programming of the cards?” Excuse me. And he specifically stated that, “Well, I think that’s asking for something beyond our capabilities. We don’t go into the programming of the cards, we’re not able to go into the programming of the cards.” Now, I will acknowledge, our machines are not connected to the Internet. But there is enough evidence out there to show that the hacking that we’re referring to, that people refer to, has nothing to do with being connected to the Internet, it’s within the coding of the machine. And so, backtracking in the conversation with my moderator, I know, in my town, in the town of Rye, there is nobody oversighting LHS, period. LHS can do whatever it wants with those cards, they do the maintenance. I have the activity logs from the town, the activity logs are not complete, but even if they had been signed for, there’s nobody that signs the activity log that understands the programming of the machine. Let me fast-forward to Wyndham. You asked for what would instill confidence. The public understood, after there was pressure put on to have an audit in Wyndham, and it took a lot of pressure, it took a unified 24 senators to sign on and get that audit. I view it as nonpartisan, totally nonpartisan, myself. And without election integrity, we don’t have anything, we don’t have a country. So 24 senators signed on to have an independent audit in Wyndham. I was disappointed that they focused only on the four races in question, I would like to have seen them do the entire town, but that aside, when it came time to have three independent auditors selected to do Wyndham, we ended up with verified voting. A single—a single entity doing that audit. Harry Hurstey, Phil Stark, Andrew Appel, Mark Lindeman are all verified voting. They were all related to verified voting, either part of the organization or on the Board of Advisors for verified voting. So you got one. You had a single group, you’re looking for confidence, and a recommendation for confidence, it would be to have had three independent auditors, not people that are all related to one another. As it turns out, after the findings Andrew Appel actually published, in conjunction with the SOS, the Secretary of State’s office, the findings, and they did find discrepancies, and discrepancies they did find indeed, and they attributed some of the problem to not having risk-limiting audits within the state. So even though we have machines, the machines dictate, determine, the outcome of the election, not the ballots, the machines do, the machine tape does. And when the machine tape is read, it’s taken verbatim. That’s the outcome of the—regardless of what actually transpired within the machine. Harry Hurstey, Phil Stark, Mark Lindeman, Andrew Appel have all published documents. This is from Andrew Appel, “Ten Ways to Make Voting Machines Cheat with Plausible Deniability.” And he uses our machines. He addresses our New Hampshire—specific New Hampshire machines on how to cheat in the machine. And they can slant, overvote, or undervote, they can do a number of different things. So this does not instill confidence when the auditors that were selected to audit Wyndham also have published widely how to cheat in each machine. Harry Hurstey has said it a number of times. So anyone that believes that the machines cannot be hacked is just simply wrong. And I’m not saying when the machines were hacked, I don’t have that capability. But to believe that the machines cannot be hacked is an ignorant statement.
Just for clarification, there’s a difference between hacking a machine and having a programming defect. Hacking means somebody from outside can affect what’s going on in the machine after it’s operating. Programming, which is a different issue.
His reference—excuse me, his reference to hacking includes altering the code within the machine, and it’s been duly noted that the machines can run on a schedule to when an election will begin, and therefore avoid any of the pre-election auditing that’s been done, trials that have been done. So the machines can be programmed in that fashion. But—if you want to say it to—outside to the Internet, no, I’m not suggesting that at all.
Right.
Only within the language of the machine.
But based on what you said previously, and I apologize for continuing the interruption, we’re just short on time. He’s implying that someone within the town hierarchy—
Or LHS.
Or LHS—
Yes.
—would be one of the two parties that have access—
Well, they have the access to it, and they have the capability to make the change, and the bottom line is that they can make that change.
Okay.
Okay. I also did take part in a recount in this recent March election, and the outcome did—the outcome of the election did not change, but the voting did not match the machine count. Further, we had the opportunity to look at the ballots, and it was interesting, because I was oversighting a table where two of my selectmen were doing the count. We had three tables set up. I thought the moderator, my Rye moderator, did a fabulous job running the recount. He was to the book, perfect. And I sat at a table with the two selectmen—I stood at a table with the two selectmen, overviewing what they were looking at. And ironically, although we were doing a zoning board election, the selectman’s vote was also on there, and he called into question a line item where his vote—he had gotten a vote—and underneath it was a vote that had been circled, and then X-ed out and lined out. And he said, “Would I have gotten this vote?” And that was challenged to the moderator, and the moderator said, “No, that’s an overvote. In a hand count, that vote would have counted.” So when we’re interested in our citizenry, having their votes count, there’s one where we just threw that vote out. It didn’t count because we used the machines.
And I appreciate your offering solutions. You talked about having three auditors— auditors instead of, you know, people all interconnected. Because of the lack of time, you may end up having to submit to us lists of other solutions that you have, but I'd like you to get to any that you might be able to deliver in the last five minutes.
Thank you, and I'll be very brief.
Thank you.
I would like, I would like to propose, and it probably has to go through legislation, but I would like to propose that Election Day become a day off for all folks, so that nobody is restricted from getting to the polls due to time. The previous speaker before me addressed, if people cared, they would be here today. I had to take the day off to come here today because I work full-time. Not everybody has that liberty. Maybe some of your meetings here could be scheduled in an evening so that others can attend. So I would, I believe that the Constitution does not provide for the opportunity to use machines as we stand today. I know there's a remonstrance on file for that right now. But elimination of the machines is absolutely number one. We've hand-counted prior to having machines. One of the previous speakers said there are countries that count, hand-count ballots and have it done in a day. We can do it in New Hampshire. So I would like to see the machines eliminated, use the paper ballots, provide hand count only. Every vote would then count, and naturally, I have concerns, although no data about mail-in balloting. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for respecting the time, what little of it that we have left, and we appreciate your testimony. Are there, before you walk away, are there any questions that anyone from the committee would like to ask? Seeing none, we thank you.
Thank you.
The next meeting.
We have run out of time. This closes the, the public hearing portion of our meeting. With apologies to those who have spoken before, but please submit your testimony, and we will make it a part of the record. The next meeting will be held on the 12th of July, if I am not mistaken.
Yes, that's correct. One, one comment on that. You have, in the proposed meeting schedule that was distributed at your place, it talks about a nine o'clock meeting of the Ballot Law Commission. You are invited, not required, to attend if your, if your sense of humor doesn't allow a full day of election conversation.
Another day off.
I think it'll be somewhat instructive to see, because what the Ballot Law Commission's going to do is consider, continue considering a newer ballot counting device, and ask a lot of questions of the vendor. In the afternoon, you're going to get a presentation by me on the Ballot Law Commission's adopted criteria for ballot counting devices, and then a presentation by the vendors on how our current machines work, which will give you a chance to ask a lot of questions about the things that have been posited before us, about how those things work or don't work, and then obviously, a public comment, period.
And in, in consistency with the discussion of the time commitments, I want to disabuse anyone in this room who, and who will be watching the video, that this is a unpaid voluntary committee. We do not receive any stipends or payment from the state or any taxpayer thereof. So we are making our time available, and our gas money, and everything else that enables us to participate in this process. Is there any other business to bring before the committee at this time?
What time is Laconia?
Laconia doesn't have a time on it yet.
Yeah, we don't have a time.
Could we put that to an evening meeting?
We were
Dave.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
It's at 1:00. Laconia's at 1:00. The, the North Country meeting will be an evening meeting. We did have a discussion about that possibility. I know that
Just so we can be up all night?
Yeah, I know. Driving home. Well, we don't need to resolve that at the moment.
Okay.
But hearing no other business to be bring, to be brought before the committee, this meeting is adjourned by vote. Is there a motion?
Someone's moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed?
Never fails.